Good evening, Yolanda. Good evening, Larry.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor. Hi Bob, hi James.
Hello, fellow.
Hi Mayor again.
Yolanda, Larry, I'm just telling you about you may seem to be taking my glasses off once in a while when I look at the screen tonight. So to compensate for some issues with my right eye.
I heard you. Thank you anyways.
Yeah.
Well, I hope it's on the mend.
Well, it not much they can mend it with. So it's a I've been diagnosed with a branch retinal vein occlusion. And a angiography last Friday when they inject the dye into your system and look at the vessels. So I wound up with a the one of the veins, one that crosses the artery has a slight blockage in it. And it creates a shadow or a cloudy kind of a blind spot in areas of your vision.
No eye drops for that?
I'm taking eye drops. What they gave me is although my eye pressure is normal, they gave me eye drops to continuously reduce the pressure, which relieves some of the pressure on the retina. So I go back now once a month for the next three months to get checked. And then Saturday I had an ultrasonic sonogram of my car arteries.
Oh.
They don't think there's a problem there, but they want to check everything, of course. So they're checking everything. But yeah. But it came on, as you know, Yolanda, it came on so suddenly, it was there, it just came on suddenly. So yeah. No pain, no discomfort, just a little bit of a different way I have to look at things. Literally.
We're getting old.
Yes, we are. Yeah, having that dye on your system, that was one of the strangest things I've ever experienced. You see your arteries and your veins in your eyes just kind of they light up.
So will you lose your eyesight out of that?
No, no, it's just that one portion where it has that little cloud kind of obstruction in the vision. Sometimes it's more pronounced than others. So other times it's almost not, not, you know, not visible, but it's there all the time. Yeah. So that's why they want to continuously do the eye drops and other types of of monitoring to keep, keep, keep a look at it. Started that up. Everything else is great.
Don't jinx yourself.
No, I won't. I got through my annual, okay, and all my blood work over there was really good. So it's fine. So then and I told you my sun rate for my joint issue was the lowest it's been in five years. It was really good news. Anyway, that's enough about me.
There's hope for you yet, Clyde.
Yes, there is.
As long as it doesn't affect your golf game.
You know, I'll have to do a Jack Nichols thing, you know, look down with one eye. That's the thing. Okay, I think we're ready to go. Sean, are we ready?
I'm ready here.
There we go. Hey, everybody, welcome to our city council study session for February 22nd, 2021. And at this point in time, I will call the meeting to order. And per Governor Inslee's emergency proclamation, twenty dash zero five and twenty dash twenty eight. And stay safe and healthy. The City of Auburn is prohibited from holding in-person meetings at this time. City of Auburn Resolution 5581 designates the City of Auburn meeting locations for all regular, special and study session meetings of the city council and of the committees, boards, and commissions of the city as virtual locations until Washington's governor authorizes local governments to conduct in-person meetings. And if you look on our agendas, there is a link that you can follow to join the meetings and listen in to study sessions. And with that, Sean, will you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember J. Rogge. Councilmember J. Rogge. Councilmember J. Rogge, you're muted.
There's something wrong with my audio. It's coming in and out.
Okay, I can hear. Okay, we can hear you now. Councilmember Stern.
Here.
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember J. Rogge, I'm going to go ahead and meet you one more time.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Excuse me, city clerk. I was not called for the agenda.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Langa. Councilmember Langa?
Here.
Thank you, Rob, and I did notice that and I failed to say that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will start with our agenda items for council discussion this evening. And the first item on the agenda is the Pierce Transit updates with Director Gao Ingrid.
Good evening. I'm actually going to pass this off to Cecile Malik, our senior transportation planner, to give you a brief Pierce Transit gives you their presentation tonight.
Good evening, council members. My name is Cecile Malik, Senior Transportation Planner for Auburn. And I'm here to introduce a team from Pierce Transit who's going to give you an update. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. Pierce Transit operates one route in Auburn, Route 497, which is a commuter route which serves the area of Lake Land Hills to meet the Sounder train. And this is a route that is operated or funded in partnership between King County Metro, CTF Auburn, and Pierce Transit. And a new contract was put in place late last year for this route, which is very popular, at least was very popular before the pandemic and will be very popular again. So I believe that Mayor Roscoe from CTF Five wanted to give a few words of introductions. And then, and I'm sorry if I butcher your last name, but Lindsay Semel and Alexandra Mather from Pierce Transit are going to take it away. If you want to share your presentation.
Thank you so much, Cecile. And I am actually not sure if Mayor Roscoe is with us this evening. So I'm just going to go ahead and start. My name's Alexandra Mather. I am the Government Relations Administrator for Pierce Transit. And I'm joined with my colleague Lindsay Semel, who is our principal planner tonight. And we're going to give you a quick agency update and talk about what we're doing down at the legislature, as well as a couple of projects we have coming up for the agency. So as everyone in public service knows, when COVID hit in March 2020, everyone had to act quickly and was unsure of what the impacts of the virus would have on our public agencies. So Pierce Transit is reliant heavily on sales tax. Eighty-five percent of our revenue is generated from rail sales tax. So the agency decided quickly that they were going to pass a continuing resolution in the fall on the budget. We furloughed several employees who were operators because we also had to cut service. Fortunately, a lot of those operators are back. We actually had quite a bit of operators retire, which helped those who were younger in the ranks just go to furlough. And then we were able to bring them back. So it was a very collaborative process. We also had to put some projects on hold. And fortunately, we get to move forward with those as well. The federal packages that we received benefit from, we had, we benefited from both of the federal coronavirus relief packages. So we feel very fortunate. I think another thing that Pierce Transit learned from the coronavirus was the difference between commuter service and regional transit service. You know, I know the mayor is heavily involved in sound transit. And we really were able to see the difference between service levels from the virus. So in April, when everything was shut down, commuter routes around the state, you know, your sound transits, your KCM water taxi, kids up, ferries, ridership dropped about ninety percent, whereas local transit service, the Pierce Transits, the community transits, et cetera, our ridership dropped seventy percent and has started to climb back up. Whereas in those commuter services, ridership is still down about eighty percent. So really like what that showed us was that we are an essential service. We are the ones, you know, in April, when everything was shut down, we're still moving thirty percent of our riders to essential jobs, to doctor's appointments, to grocery stores, et cetera. It was so revealing and it really has helped the agency focus and center our essential riders and provide a quality of service for them that we know we can use that model going into the future. Pierce Transit is also embarking on a bus rapid transit system. We're currently working on our first route. It is the Route One. It is our highest ridership line in our system. It will start downtown Tacoma, connect through Tacoma Dome Station, which is the largest regional transit hub in the state, and then come down Pacific Ave. It will cut transit time and travel time for its riders by a third. So it really is the gifted time. And as you all know, Bus Rapid Transit is a great catalyst for economic development and affordable housing. So we're very excited about this project for Pierce County. We're also investing a hundred million dollars, or I'm sorry, one million dollars in a system expansion study that will inform the next four routes that we want to convert to Bus Rapid Transit. It will also inform how we electrify the routes. We have a strong partnership with Tacoma Public Utilities. And so with them and other regional partners, we are really looking to be an example of how the public transit, public utilities can come together and be an example of what's possible for transportation electrification. If the state legislature is able to pass a transportation package this session, we have worked with the Pierce County delegation to fund the ten million is our request for the next Bus Rapid Transit line, which we are calling BRT two. So we are hopeful that next time we talk to you, we will have secured that funding. But, you know, time will tell. And with that, I am going to hand it over to Lindsay.
Thank you, Alex. My name is Lindsay Semel. I'm the principal planner with the city, no cities, with Pierce Transit on their scheduling division. Sorry, it's professional career change a year ago. We are currently working on a bus stop balancing project. One of the benefits that COVID provided us is we had to look at other ways to do some work while we were down in the pandemic and service was lower. We had a number of our staff members go out and do an assessment of all of the routes that we have and all of the stops, which are approximately about two thousand and two hundred stops within our PTBA system, analyzing their efficiency effectiveness, as well as reliability, ridership, and safety features, whether there's amenities nearby such as crosswalks or clear vision for riders to board and onboard. We are working on a bus stop balancing project for the full PTBA. Public outreach will begin this month. As we are presenting to our local boards, commissions, and committees. And then any stops that will be posted for a consideration for stop removal will have a four-week public comment period for any affected riders to be able to reach out to Pierce Transit and let them, let us know if they have concerns about that stop being removed. Next slide, please, Alex. One of the biggest details of information that we've been working on sharing with our municipalities is the ridership activity and just showing how trends changed due to COVID. Now, being that Route 497 is developed and implemented as a commuter route, when the sounder schedule dropped service, we also dropped the connecting routes from Lakeland Hills all the way down to the Auburn Sounder Station. And so as you can see, we started to, in June, we recovered some service as Sound Transit recovered their sounder service. And as more trips return on the sounder, we will be returning more trips on the Route 497. That is a wonderful partnership between the City of Auburn, Pierce Transit, as well as King County Metro to really assist in creating the connectivity for the whole city. And then for March, we are recovering service to ninety-five percent of our pre-COVID service hours. We are focused on recovering Sunday service hours and trunk routes. 497 does not operate on the weekends. Therefore, there's no improvements at this time for that route. However, our trunk routes that serve Federal Way and the other connection points that your residents can ride KCM, King County Metro to say Federal Way and get down to Tacoma, all of our trunk routes will be at a hundred percent operational. So and as well as our Route 500 and as well as our Route 500. So there are connections that are improving for the region as we want to get back to normality as soon as possible. And we hope to return to our pre-COVID service hours as soon as funding provides. Is there any other slides, Alex? Okay, well, that concludes our questions, or that concludes our presentation. One thing that I did want to note is in the scheduling division, my prior experience does come from some land use planning. And so as the City of Auburn faces growth pressures or changes in considerations and land use or anything along that aspect, I do want to reach out and offer a hand and let you know that we're available.
Councilmember J. Rogge has raised his hand.
Councilmember J. Rogge, go ahead.
Thank you for the great presentation this evening. There's a couple of questions I've got. How many stops are you guys going to take out from the City of Auburn is one. Go ahead. If you want to answer that question.
If you want to finish your questions, I'll go ahead and answer them all at once, if that works, council member.
Yes, that's fine. The other one is will those stops be reinstated when everything gets back normal? And the final question is can you elaborate on the rapid, bus rapid transit and what do you mean by electrification? Would that be inclusive of Lakeland Hills through to to the train station that we have?
So I will start with the bus stop balancing. No stops actually in the Route 497 are being considered for removal as they'll have good, the good amenities within them. But in regards to your second question, the stop balancing is not to remove stops because of COVID ridership. We're actually analyzing it based upon our 2019 ridership data pre-COVID. And it is, it will speed up and create more efficiency within our system throughout, so that we can actually get people quicker to their destination. You know, sometimes there are some areas where we have stops every three to five hundred feet and it just becomes a it eats up the time that we can get to the end of the line. So but the City of Auburn specifically for Pierce Transit's Route 497 has no stops being considered at this time. Then I will pass it to Alexandra to talk about electrification.
Thank you, and thank you, council members. So with electrification, what we mean by that is we would run electric buses as the transportation mode on the lines. The future BRT network does not touch, it does not touch Auburn. It doesn't serve up there. We have this trunk route and I'm happy to forward a map that we have to you if you think that would be helpful.
That would be good.
Okay, okay, I'll send you that. But essentially, everything, it's more to the west and serves Tacoma, Furcrest, UP, Lakewood, and then a future line could serve Puyallup.
Okay, so basically what you're saying is everything is pretty much in Pierce County.
Yes, yes, it is.
Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I was just wondering, speaking about electrification, if you could give us what your goals are for zero emission? Or maybe your, in your section.
I'm so glad you asked. We originally, so Pierce Transit currently has three electric buses. We have nine more coming online. And when the agency first started to diversify, it was like, oh, we want, you know, twenty percent of our fleet to be electric. We currently run CNG. Some of you might be familiar, but you know, back in like 2012, I think it was before my time at the agency, but the CNG fueling station stopped working. And so then we were driving our buses up to Seattle for fuel. And we realized how you really do need to have two different propulsion, propulsion systems to protect, you know, for redundancy for operations. So at first we were like, oh, yes, we want to go twenty percent. But then just today, we were talking, if we are going to be running electric articulated buses on all of these routes, each route requires seventeen buses. So I think that our, I need to get a really specific number, but I think it'll probably be more on the thirty-five to forty percent electric, sixty percent CNG.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? All right, unless you have hands raised. So Alexandria and Lindsay, thank you very much for the presentation. We appreciate it very much. Excellent. And look forward to future conversations. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is our Housing Action Plan, our Existing Conditions Report with Director Tate.
And I, good evening, council. And I'm going to do a quick handover to Planning Services Manager Jeff Dixon, who's going to provide a brief background and introduction. And then our consultants are going to get into the details.
Great. Good evening, council members. Jeff Dixon, Planning Services Manager with the Community Development Department. I'd like to take your time this evening to provide a general overview. And then as Mr. Tate mentioned, I'd like to turn it over to the city consultants for some greater detail. As a general overview, in 2019, the Washington State Legislature, recognizing the need for additional housing, authorized, and Governor Inslee signed into law, engrossed Second Substitute House Bill 1923. It authorized the Washington State Department of Commerce to issue grant funding for the purposes of increasing residential housing capacity in urban areas. The City of Auburn submitted a grant application in September of 2019, requesting the maximum award of a hundred thousand. And we received this award in November. And on November 18th, the City of Auburn Council adopted Resolution 5471, which authorized the city to enter into a contract with the Washington State Department of Commerce to accept the grant and to prepare a housing action plan. In short, the goal of the Housing Action Plan is to encourage construction of additionable, affordable, and market-rate housing in a greater variety of housing types and at prices that are accessible to a greater variety of incomes, including strategies aimed at the for-profit, single-family home market. To do this, the plan is proposed to accomplish seven purposes. Those are listed in the staff report or on page twelve of your packet. And those are to quantify existing and projected housing needs for all income levels, to develop strategies to increase the supply of housing and the variety of housing types, to analyze population and employment trends with documentation of those projections, to consider strategies to minimize displacement of low-income residents resulting from redevelopment, to review and evaluate the current housing element or chapter of the city's comprehensive plan with the eye for needed changes, and to provide for participation and input as we develop the Housing Action Plan from a variety of interested parties. And also to identify a schedule of strategies and implementation recommendations for the Housing Action Plan. I don't want to take anything away from the consultant who will speak to you next, but to orient council members on the development of the Housing Plan, Action Plan, it's generally divided into two main components. The first phase consists of the development of the South King County Subregional Housing Action Framework document. So this was done with collaboration with five other local jurisdictions, Burien, Federal Way, Kent, Renton, and Tuck Willa, and consisted of collecting subregional data necessary to support the development of individual housing action plans for each jurisdiction. It allowed us to compare the information between several different South King County cities. And this effort was completed in August of 2020 and is attached an executive summary and fact sheet from this effort is attached as attachment C on page eighty-seven of your packet. So this document is entitled, The South King County Subregional Housing Action Framework. And this document captures broad factors impacting housing choices, cost burdening, existing conditions of housing stock in South King County, and sets the stage for evaluation and incorporation of appropriate policies, tools, and incentives for increasing residential capacity. The second phase and the main effort of this changes the focus from multi-jurisdictional to that specifically of the City of Auburn. And so as part of the first step of this phase, the city's consultant has prepared information specific to the city. They have put together a document, which is the Auburn Housing Action Plan Existing Conditions Memorandum, which is attached as attachment B on page forty-one of your packet. This document has the draft watermark because it's not meant to be a standalone document, but to have its contents incorporated in the final version of the Housing Action Plan. And this document, besides an introduction, consists of a housing needs analysis that looks at the current housing inventory in the city, current demographics and employment tends, trends for Auburn residents, and estimates the future housing needs through 2040. It includes market conditions, providing data on recent rents, home sales, vacancy rates, and development trends in the city. And it also has a housing planning and policy evaluation where it looks at policies at the state and local levels that influence development in the city and looks at the city's own planning decisions and comprehensive plan policies. And then this document also includes some background on its methodology and data sources and assumptions that were used in gathering the information. This phase also has an emphasis on a public outreach to solicit feedback. And a similar presentation to what is under discussion tonight with the city council was also shared with the Planning Commission at its February second meeting. So just earlier this month. The Planning Commissioners were very interested in this topic and had several questions about the public engagement process and how that was being conducted in the times of a pandemic. And we had to make some shifts and adjustments. They also inquired about the schedule and how other interested persons could participate or provide input. And the consultant and staff explained And the consultant and staff explained about some of those changes and and how there were some additional opportunities for interested parties to provide feedback. And the commission also asked about how they would find out about the contents of the Housing Action Plan and its strategies and whether those would come back before them. And we did tell them that, yes, we are gathering information from the public input process, the consultants working on recommendations and implementation strategies that will be shared with the Planning Commission and City Council and help guide the City of Auburn in its housing policies and regulations over the twenty twenty, twenty forty planning period. So um the implementation recommendations of this Housing Action Plan are kind of illustrated in a graphic form on page fifteen of your package where there's a little diagram about how the results and strategies can influence both the city's comprehensive plan documents, like our housing chapter or housing element, and the land use element or chapter. And and how those could set the stage for cert, for future city code or development regulation changes such as affecting like what land uses are allowed in certain zones or changing the actual zoning development regulations that may uh influence housing. And under this grant, the city's contract with the Washington State Department of Commerce specifies that the Housing Action Plan must be adopted by the City Council uh by June twenty twenty-one. So we're targeting uh to bring this back before the City Council in May. So with that brief overview, I'd like to introduce Tyler Bump of the consulting firm Eco Northwest to further explain how they are assisting the city in the development of the Housing Action Plan and to share the results on what they have found so far.
Let me share my screen. And if I'm successful, um.
Jeff, we're good. We can just start from here. That's all right. It's all good. Um, good evening, members of council. My name is Tyler Bump. I'm a project director at Eco Northwest. We are a full-service economics firm with the land use and housing policy practice area which I lead. Um, out of our offices in Seattle, Portland, Boise, Eugene, and Los Angeles. We do work up and down the West Coast, although most of our work is focused in Washington and Oregon. Um, and I've been fortunate enough to be working with your talented staff and community development with Jeff Tate, Jeff Dixon, and Anthony Avery on this work uh to continue the work that we started with the the South King County Subregional Housing Action Plan Framework. Um, today, real quickly, before I jump into it, we're gonna cover a few things, the process. Jeff mentioned a little bit about these different components. We'll go with that. Uh, we'll talk about some of our key findings uh from the Existing Conditions Report. So really boiling down fifty pages of interesting technical data and charts and there's some key points that we want to share with you today. Talk about a little bit, a little bit about the public engagement and the next steps as well. So Jeff, if you could move to the next slide, please. Um, so just a little bit on the process. So these are the four sort of major components of the Housing Action Plan that we're working on here in Auburn, as well as in many other jurisdictions across Washington under the C H B nineteen twenty-three um grant funding. And so the first step and sort of step throughout the whole process is public engagement, development of a public engagement plan, and then executing on that public engagement plan to involve the wide range of stakeholders across the community. Both in understanding housing needs and sort of facilitating some of the recommendations and strategies to address housing need at different income levels. Uh, the second big component is uh existing conditions. This is really the, the sort of baseline for the recommendations, what's been going on in the housing market. Uh, sort of real estate economics, household demographics, housing need, um, looking at development trends, population growth, what all of that means uh for moving forward and meeting housing needs into the future in Auburn. And then we've got this recommended actions or strategy section. Take the public input, work with staff, work with city council, planning commissions to develop um uh sort of prioritization of, of recommendations and strategies here. We're also doing a, a sort of deeper dive on this development feasibility analysis, which is kind of unique to this process of testing some of the recommendations to see how they can help support some of the outcomes that folks want to see in Auburn in the community. And then the adoption process, and Jeff mentioned this hopefully in May for you all, is really about adopting the report. And then the next step should be thinking about how to integrate some of those recommendations into the comprehensive plan or housing element or other programmatic um changes moving forward. But really, the adoption is the report um as, as to satisfy the grant requirements and then have those recommendations move forward in other policy. So next slide, please, Jeff. Um, and then uh Jeff mentioned the South King County Subregional Housing Action Plan Framework building up from that. Um, again, this is a sort of overview of the, the key things that we're doing here. So public engagement, um assessing housing needs in twenty forty, so really understanding what housing needs are today, sort of estimating and forecasting what housing needs are by different income levels through twenty forty, um looking at demographic and employment trends, uh and then developing new strategies. So we've got three sort of big categories of strategies that we're working in. Um, number one, preserve existing housing. Uh, number two, increase housing production broadly across all income categories. So how do we uh increase housing production for both regulated affordable housing as well as market rate housing into the future? Um, and then number three, increasing housing choice. So realizing that there's a diversity of housing needs both at the income level and housing type for folks now and into the future. So what does that mean for housing types that are allowed or encouraged throughout Auburn? Um, and then one of the other things we're doing is evaluating neighborhood context for housing type allowances. So really, this is uh, we're, we're taking a, a little bit of a deeper look into some of the single-family neighborhoods, so the R five and the R seven zones, and making sure that we're taking a sort of neighborhood context sensitive approach to any recommendations there. And then finally, uh creating the Housing Action Plan, the final Housing Action Plan. Next slide, Jeff. Um, so the map of the South King County Subregion, I want to show this uh for a couple reasons. One, to demonstrate the collaboration with some of these other jurisdictions in South King County. Um, the one sort of partner in this that uh we did mention at city level is the South King County Housing and Homelessness Partnership is, as being a sort of subregional group that's emerging and developing uh on housing policy and affordable housing in South King County. But we really wanted to look at housing at a regional level. And in South King County, it's different than looking at King County as a whole, just because the economy is so much different. Uh, housing prices and housing availability are so much different in Seattle or parts of East King County. So really isolating the sort of subregional look um at housing conditions in this, in the South King County subregion. Next slide, please. So we'll get into the sort of highlights of the existing conditions and housing needs analysis here. Next slide. Uh, before we get into this, I do want to spend a minute defining um a, a term that we use throughout our work and presentation today, which is A M I, and A M I stands for Area Median Income. We talk about area median income uh as a sort of metric or threshold for affordability that looks at a lot of different things. It looks at household size. It looks at uh uh area median income as a percent of a hundred percent. So a hundred percent A M I, area median income is the baseline for which we evaluate affordability, whether lower than that or higher than that. And that hundred percent A M I level is set for King County as a whole. Um, the way that HUD defines A M I is set for, for at the county level for King County. So one of the things we're looking at as part of this work is how does South King County income levels and in Auburn income levels differ compared to the rest of King County as a whole? And what does that mean for affordability more broadly? Um, but as an example here, one hundred percent A M I for a family of two is about eighty-five thousand six hundred dollars. Um, and what that means in terms of max monthly housing cost is about two thousand dollars, two thousand one hundred dollars a month in max monthly housing costs. And that assumes that a household should not be spending more or uh, the goal is to not be spending more than thirty percent of household income on housing costs. So that's the threshold of affordability. Um, when we look at that max monthly housing cost across King County, we have a couple examples of what that means for occupations or number of earners within a household. Um, that same hundred percent A M I for a family of four increases to a little over a hundred and three thousand dollars per year and increases that max monthly housing cost to about two thousand six hundred dollars a month or so. So that's a little bit of the, what A M I means. It scales by cost, it scales by number of people in a household, it scales by number of bedrooms in a household, but it's a way for us to compare affordability across different household types. Next slide, please. Um, and so a quick, quick off on that A M I level. So what is A M I relative to rents? So I'll use this as an example here. In Auburn, um, we have a one-bedroom market rate rent and two-bedroom market rate rents for new construction multifamily um in Auburn. So uh market rents are generally coming in at about eighty percent M F I or eighty percent A M I or change of M F I and A M I. Um, and why that's important is because that means that new construction is what we would call generally affordable as workforce housing for the most part for new construction, um apartments, new construction multifamily rentals. Um, that we know is changing over time as markets in South King County uh get more expensive and that there's more, more uh pressures on the housing market. But right now, it's about eighty percent A M I for a two-person household and a one-bedroom unit is about one thousand six hundred and sixty dollars a month and almost twenty-two hundred dollars a month for a two-bedroom new construction unit in Auburn. Next slide, please. Uh, a little bit of a comparison of Auburn, South King County, and King County here. So we've got Auburn uh household income distribution in the green, South King County household income distribution in the blue, and King County as a whole in gray. Next slide, please. And the reason that we do this is to compare to see what variations are happening within uh community-level demographics uh between these different geographies. So Auburn and South King County pretty much track very, very similarly across all these income categories. Uh, you can see in the green and the blue bars, they're pretty much the same, we're very close to the same in most of these income categories. Where Auburn and both South King County diverge from King County as a whole, or where they're starkly the most different, is that Auburn and South King County have a higher share of households in the fifty percent to eighty percenting in my category and a lower share of households in the one hundred percent and above category. And this is a reflection mostly of housing affordability um across the region and where folks can access housing. Um, and what this tells us is that Auburn and South King County are the places where you can access uh more affordable, let's say affordable, but more affordable housing options throughout King County. Next slide, please, Jeff. Um, one of the other things that we've looked at is how housing prices have changed over time. So um some of our highlights here from two thousand ten to two thousand twenty, the average two-bedroom rent has increased about forty-nine percent. In that same ten-year period of time, the average median home sales price has increased about eighty-eight percent. So almost doubling the cost of median home sales price in the ten-year period. Um, given this two thousand ten, you know, we were still kind of pretty deep in the recession at that point in time. And at two thousand twenty was uh, you know, pretty high in terms of economic activity before COVID really started hitting things, although it hasn't put a damp, dampening on the housing market more broadly in suburban jurisdictions in the Puget Sound. But interestingly, from two thousand twelve to two thousand eighteen, uh median renter household increased kind of proportionally with increases in housing costs. But the increase in owner household income only went up seventeen percent. So uh, household incomes went up seventeen percent uh for homeowners and household costs, homeownership costs went up eighty-eight percent in that same period of time. So what that means on the homeownership side is that today, when twenty twenty, at the end of twenty twenty, the average sales price was about four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for, for a home in Auburn. That is a, over two hundred and twenty thousand dollars since two thousand ten. So pretty big increases in the, in the cost of homeownership uh over the last ten years in Auburn. Next slide, please. Uh, so one of the other things that we look at is cost burdening. And this gets back to that thirty percent of household income going to your uh a household's uh housing costs. And so we'll redefine two things, cost burdening and severe cost burdening. Cost burdening means a household that spends more than thirty percent of their household income on rent or mortgage and property tax payments. Um, severe cost burning is a household that spends more than fifty percent of their average house or of their uh uh monthly income on household, on housing costs. And so uh what we see here, and it, it's most important to look at cost burdening for renter households specifically. Uh, and so what we see here is that the vast majority of uh renters in the zero to thirty percent A M I category are cost burdened. So almost ninety percent of renters in the zero to thirty category are cost burdened. And the thirty to fifty percent A M I category, about seventy percent of renters are cost burdened. Um, and then it, it starts tapering down once you start to get the fifty to eighty, a hundred percent A M I level for renters. Uh, I will say that um there is less cost burdening happening for renters in the fifty to eighty percent category than some of the other jurisdictions in King County. Uh, so while there is uh cost burning is happening for lower income households, um, once you get to that moderate income, fifty, eighty percent and above, um, there's less cost burdening happening there. Next slide, please. Uh, so one of the other things that we're looking at here, um, and this, it starts to inform some of our recommendations on really community stabilization and um anti-displacement measures is looking to see where folks in Auburn are most at risk or vulnerable to displacement. So what we've done here is taken a methodology that uh P S R C's developed, the Displacement Risk Tool, sort of broken it down a little bit to have a more refined look at the city level. And these are uh census block groups within uh Auburn. But we look at uh six indicators, the share of population that identifies as a race other than non-Hispanic whites, the percent of households that speak a language other than English at home, the percent of a population over the age of twenty-five who have less than a bachelor's degree in education, the percent of households that are renters, uh, the percent of households that are paying more than thirty percent of their income on housing, uh so cost burdened households, and uh per capita income. Uh, and so this, we were able to sort of put together a composite score of households that are most at risk. All of these individual indicators uh have been shown in the literature to be those that most impact uh vulnerability to displacement and households that have less options when faced with housing cost increases and housing price pressures. So this is another piece of information and data um that can help inform our, our policy thinking and where to target programs and policy recommendations specifically on sort of stabilization and affordable housing and anti-displacement. Um, and I see Councilmember Sterns has a question. Jeff, I don't know if you want to take questions now or if we want to wait till the end. Sort of leave it up to you.
I think Tyler, that's kind of your choice for willing to take questions from council now. We can do that.
Sure. Why don't we, I, I think we're almost done with this existing conditions portion before, why don't we get to the end of the data side? Um, and then uh when we get right before the engagement, we'll start to talk, we can answer some of the questions here.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Uh, Jeff, next slide, please. Uh, and so one of the other things that we're looking at is uh housing production uh trends over time. So since two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, Auburn has produced on average about three hundred and ninety new units of housing annually. Uh, and that's, as you can see, sort of, there's ups and downs over time to get to that three hundred and ninety units. Uh, two thousand thirteen and two thousand nineteen were that sort of big standout years for housing production in Auburn. Um, but on average over the last ten years, it's about three hundred and ninety units per year built. Next slide, please. Um, the other thing that we want to look at here in terms of housing need and household demographics is the share of renters by, or the, the household income distribution by tenure. Um, and so it's a sort of helpful to, to think about policy and land use around where uh and, and how to ex, expand housing opportunities for ownership or rental in different ways to target different needs. Um, and what this chart shows in Auburn is that the majority of, of homeowners are in the fifty percent, eighty percent, and a hundred percent A M I and above categories, and majority of renter households are in the zero to eighty percent A M I categories. Um, that's changing over time. It's a sort of trend that's changing over time, and we are seeing an increase in eighty percent and above households that are, that are more um in their, in renters um across our communities. Uh, but this is where Auburn stands today. Next slide, please. Um, maybe before, maybe this is a good place to stop Jeff for questions before we get to housing need. Um, before we get questions, so I'll sort of open it up and ask Councilmember Sterns if there's a question or clarification I can provide for you.
Um, yeah, um, great, can, uh, okay, you can hear me. Um, thanks. Yeah, that, this is fascinating. Um, so we, we, we all just went through um race and uh equity uh training. And uh, you know, so that, that really is something that, that I'm thinking about a lot. So I'm, I'm wondering, what are the homeownership rates for blacks, Native Americans, Hispanic, Pacific Islanders?
That's a great question. So there's some additional sort of breakdown on uh housing demographics by race and ethnicity in the Existing Conditions Report. I don't sure, I'm not sure that we included the homeownership rates by race and ethnicity in there. What we did look at is household income and tenure and cost burdening by race and ethnicity. Uh, but that's one thing we can follow up and make sure that we include as we make edits to this for the final Housing Action Plan for you.
No, that, that would be really great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. Sure.
Councilmember Lingus raise your hand.
Councilmember Lingus.
Thank you. You were saying here, I think, over the ten year period, how much the cost of homeownership was, and I think it was like right now at average of four hundred something thousand. What was that for the rent? What is the average rent here in Auburn now?
The average rent, so I showed a new construction, I think it was about twenty two hundred at the beginning, but the average rent for a two bedroom unit in Auburn is about fourteen hundred dollars a month.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe pause and see if that's a lot of information that I've thrown up there. So maybe pause and see if there's any other clarifications, questions I can I can provide here.
Councilmember Trump and Wells raise your hand.
Yep, Councilmember Trump and go ahead.
Yes, hi, thank you. Did you say that was fourteen hundred dollars a month for how many bedrooms?
It's a two bedroom, average for two bedroom.
For a two bedroom? That's a house or an apartment?
It's across all housing types for two bedrooms. So we look at sort of blended between apartment or a house, house rental data for a single family houses is harder to get than for multifamily apartments. So we do a blended average across apartments and single family rentals.
Thanks Tyler.
Councilmember Jay Rogers raise his hand.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Tyler, thank you for the presentation. I do want to ask you this question. The fourteen hundred dollars monthly rent, is that considered to be low income?
I think I'd have to go look back at the AMI charts and see. I believe, see for a two person household, it's coming in just a little shy of it's probably about sixty percent, between sixty percent and eighty percent AMI. So affordable, well, depends on your definition. Generally eighty percent to a hundred percent AMI is called workforce housing, sixty to eighty percent sort of is in between what we call affordable housing and workforce housing. But for the most part, what that what that means is that there's a more market rate affordable housing rental stock that exists in Auburn than in other places in King County is what is how we characterize that.
Okay, so I I was just kind of holding back to find out what your future housing need is and also there is plans for affordable housing in there as well. So I'm just going to keep quiet for right now. Let let you do your spiel and then I will jump in and ask you the question.
Sure. And and I point you to, we have a regulated affordable housing inventory in the existing conditions report as well. So we've looked at all of the regulated affordable housing that exists in Auburn and looked at the number of units and even trying to figure out when some of those affordability requirements might be expiring. But we do characterize at least the regulated affordable housing stock in the existing conditions report as well.
Okay, sounds good.
Council, I'm going to ask that we let Tyler complete the rest of his presentation so we can I know there's going to be probably quite a few more questions. He has a few more slides to go if we can bear with that, that we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I will get moving on to the next slide here. So then this next section is on future housing need. And essentially what we do here is we look at two things, the future need, which is using the population forecast from OFM and from King County that defines future need. And we look at what we call underproduction. So is housing growth happening at the or housing development happening the same rate that household growth is happening? And we want to make sure the reason that we want to account for underproduction is if we only look at future need, we might be working at from a place of deficit if we think about future need. So combining current underproduction with future need, we're looking at about ten thousand four hundred new units needed through twenty forty. And that works out to about five hundred and twenty one units on an annual basis needed through twenty forty. So if you think back on on the sort of average trends over the last ten years, Auburn's had about three hundred and ninety units built per year. So in order to meet this need and just total every housing, you know, every household is the same total need, about five hundred and twenty one units on an annual basis through twenty forty. So an increase in the rate of production that Auburn's currently seeing over the last ten years. Next slide please. So then the next thing that we do, and I I think Councilmember Jay Rogers gets to your question is the 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 housing need broken down by household income category. And so we take a look at what the current distribution of household incomes are. Look at trends over time and try to forecast out what that future need of all the total ten thousand four hundred housing units are broken down by household income. So this kind of reflects what we what we saw on that chart of comparing household incomes between Auburn, South King County and King County, where the biggest categories of future housing need or forecast housing need are in the fifty percent to eighty percent category and a hundred percent AMI and above category. But we do have a large share of units in the zero to thirty and thirty to fifty percent AMI. So about twenty seven hundred units or so at household income levels below fifty percent AMI by twenty forty for affordable units needed. Next slide please. And then we're going to get into the public engagement update. I think I might try to make it through this public engagement update and then we can open it for broader questions and have a bigger conversation with the engagement and the data altogether. If that's all right with folks. Okay, so we'll keep moving. Next slide please, Jeff. So before I get into the sort of public engagement goals here, we were working with one of our close partners, Andrea Petzel from Broadview Planning on the public engagement portion of this work. We are working with her on all of our housing action plans right now across South King County. She has very, very good connections with community organizations across South King County and Auburn. And I'm sort of presenting her work to date here and giving you an update. But our public engagement goals for this project are to reflect Auburn's diversity and tell residents housing opportunities and challenges, still talking about stories about housing opportunities and challenges. Remain focused and flexible on authentic public involvement, given the challenges of COVID nineteen. Develop and maintain a consistent communication strategy and ensure equitable messaging and closing the information loop. So we're actually doing quite a bit of sort of community education and then looping back with folks that we've talked to about how their feedback is integrating into the recommendations that we will be making as part of the housing action plan. Clearly connect how the community involvement is informing those strategies. Present information and data that summarizes community perspectives on how new housing integrates into existing neighborhoods and understand barriers to homeownership and best practices for creating opportunities for folks to own their own homes and and sort of create more stability through homeownership and really wealth generation. And I think this gets to that racial equity piece that came up a little bit as well. Next slide please. And so an update on public engagement. The engagement state has has been focused very much on social justice and racial equity as the lens for engagement here. The intent of our our public engagement is to engage with community members and organizations who typically don't do not participate in planning processes and include an educational component to relay how different housing types and different housing needs can support and enhance diverse vibrant city in Auburn. So I'm using it as a way to think more holistically about the vision of the city and what folks in the community want the the future of Auburn to look like. Next slide please. So outreach methods, we've had a number of sort of one on one interviews, ten to twelve individual interviewers. Some small focus groups. The small focus groups and individual interviews have been really focused on culturally specific community serving organizations, faith based institutions. We had some feedback from planning commission about reaching sort of the elderly population in or older folks in Auburn more intentionally. Trying to figure out how we're going to do that. Having a big social media presence, there's a website distribution list. So there's a screenshot from the housing action plan landing page on the city of Auburn's website. The URL there is speakupauburn.org slash HAP. So plug for the for the website there. And then we're having some community forums and public particip- public presentations as part of this engagement effort as well. Next slide please, Jeff. So a little bit on the timeline. In January, we finalized the plan, the questions and stakeholder contacts and really started scheduling interviews and engagement with folks. This month, February, we had a planning commission update. We're talking to you all at city council. We're continuing our interviews and conducting the focus group. So really, February is the month where our team is doing our our most of our community engagement and outreach. I should mention also as part of the the stakeholder outreach, Eco Northwest is a firm because of the work that we're doing on the just sort of feasibility testing. We've had a number of conversations with developers that do development projects in Auburn and South King County. So we've been working with the Master Home Builders Association of King and St. Homish Counties and talking to a number of their members about sort of housing production trends, regulations, opportunities for recommendations, strategies. In March, we'll be summarizing findings and the draft recommendations for the housing action plan. And then April, May and June is that sort of draft, final draft housing action plan. Feedback from planning commission and city council, public comment feedback period and then sort of wrapping that all up into the final housing action plan. Hopefully by May, the grant requirement is by the end of June, but we're targeting the end of May to have this work done. Next slide please, Jeff. And that is all we have. Open it up for questions.
Right. So let's, thank you very much, Tyler. Great presentation. Let's go ahead and begin with Councilmembers Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you again, again, Tyler. What I'm wondering was, and I I could have missed this in your presentation because there was just so much in there. But what I'm looking for is a breakdown of the percentage of households in Auburn that are cost burdened. So like, you know, what percentage of say household, all households are cost burdened, you know, and what percentages are severely cost burdened? And then within that, what percentage of renters households are cost burdened and what percentage of renter households are severely cost burdened? And then if you have room for some more information, renter households with incomes below eighty percent AMI, what percentage of those in Auburn are cost burdened and what percentage of those are severely cost burdened?
Yeah, so that that's a good, you're you're giving us some good homework and I'm glad we can we can improve this work for you. So what we've done so far is we characterized the percent of households within each income category that are cost burdens.
Right, I think that, yeah, I think for our overall goals to have a better sense of, okay, in Auburn, you know, like thirty percent of renter households are cost burdened and, you know, five percent are severely or whatever. But but I I think that would be really helpful. Of trying to, you know, look at the housing stock and, you know, setting realistic goals.
Yep. So what what another follow up that we'll do here and add into our update here is to add the sort of total values, total numbers for cost burdening by tenure. So to your point, the number of households and break that down by renters and owners. I do want to highlight that the ownership cost burning is kind of a tough nut to crack because in some cases you've got folks that might not have incomes because they might be retired, but also might not have a mortgage. And so the homeownership cost burning is a little hard to break down. But we will absolutely total those up and and make sure we've got those total numbers in the final housing action plan for you.
Right, thank you so much.
Sure.
Councilmember Jay Rogers and then Councilmember Lingus.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Tyler, one more question. Do you have a number of deficit deficit housing in Auburn right now?
I do. It is it's the total that we would call underproduction. So almost two thousand three hundred and sixty one units is needed beyond what exists today.
That's a family home?
Overall, that's all housing. That's a process regardless of tenure or housing type. That's if you looked at all houses. That's to match up every house that's moved on with a housing unit. So what essentially what that says is that there's more households that have either grown in Auburn through births or sort of household formation and that sort of thing. Most households that have formed, more households that have moved in than housing units that have been built. And we also account for a vacancy in there. So we we it's not a one for one new household for every housing unit. You know that we need like one point one five housing units is actually the ratio that we use. One point one five housing units for every one household that moves into account for vacancy rates, second homes, other things that happen within the market. So the current deficit or underproduction is about two thousand three hundred units.
So with that said, will that trend be the same going forward till twenty forty?
I mean, the goal is not, that's that's why we account for it in the total in the in the forecast housing need. If we didn't account for that, you know, y'all would all be working from a place of deficit starting from the beginning. So we want to account for the housing that's needed today. And then also account for the housing that's needed into the future. I think that this gets to the metrics tracking and making sure, you know, say on a rolling five year basis, four year basis that you want to review and see and say, you know, we're seeing roughly the five hundred and ninety one units that we need on an annual basis. The further away you are from that, the more underproduction we'll see over time.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Tyler.
Yes, I think my question goes a little bit with what Councilmember Sterns was asking earlier. When we're looking at the income distribution and seeing those are severely burdened, wouldn't it look different over time? And what I'm trying to say is, you know, a person that we talked about the income level at a hundred and three thousand, if they had bought their house ten years ago and it was two hundred thousand, wouldn't that look different on our chart than if they were to buy it today? And let's say they were paying six hundred thousand for a home, wouldn't that chart look a little bit different or not?
Yeah, and I I think this this question, it's a great, great question. I think the question again gets to making sure that of the five hundred and ninety one housing units that's built annually, that those housing units are across the whole across the whole household income need, right? And so I think we want to make sure that there's households or housing units that are built at fifty percent AMI, eighty percent AMI, a hundred percent AMI, so that households that have those needs aren't cost burdening over time. And so the reality is if if you said, you know, what it's unrealistic for us to assume that anything's going to be underneath a hundred percent AMI. Then yes, cost burning would increase over time. But I think what we're trying to do here is make sure that we have strategies and recommendations so that those different housing needs by different household incomes can be met into the future. And I will be, you know, perfectly clear is that the financial resources necessary to meet the needs for especially the lower income households is really hard. A lot of those take public subsidy. And so one of the big questions, I think, and this is a value out of the South King County housing homelessness partnership is how do you think across South King County about efficiently spending resources to support regulated affordable housing that requires public subsidy over time? And then how do you set up incentive structures and and a way to make more affordable housing happen over time too?
And Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Tyler, good, great presentation. A lot of detailed data here to absorb, but in reading over all the materials and especially the draft plan here. And correct me if I'm wrong, but are we, in order to meet these goals for twenty forty, are we looking more at moving towards multi more multifamily dwellings rather than single family dwellings?
I think it'll be a mix of both moving into the future. And I think how we define multifamily and single family will change over time. And so one of the things that we're looking at is you know, what happened if you if you were to allow duplexes or smaller lot single family or townhomes for the, for example, like within existing zoning allowances. So does that create more housing opportunity? But yeah, at some point it becomes a land efficiency, land availability, infrastructure service question.
Exactly, yeah. So I was looking at the available land here in Auburn and for building purposes and it it's not very, not very large. So I would think that instead of putting single family dwellings in there, it looks like we're going to be building up. And that means multifamily dwellings as a rule. So I'm just thinking that that ratio between the two is going to be more, they're going to get a little closer or they're going to get a little closer or, uh, above the single-family dwelling, uh, margin.
Yeah, I think what we're, what we're seeing, uh, certainly in the Puget Sound and in South King County is that folks thinking more about what's called, what we call middle housing or so like duplexes, triplexes, townhomes. How can that be a way to access homeownership opportunities that are a little bit different than larger lot detached, single family? It's a big policy question, and I think that's part of the, like, we may have a recommendation here, but ultimately it comes down to how do you implement that? If the city wants to implement it, there needs to be a lot of public engagement around, you know, there's existing housing element policies. So we might have some recommendations, but ultimately it needs to be part of the policy sort of update process through the comp plan or the housing element, things like that.
It's going to be interesting the next nineteen years. Thank you.
Councilmember Sterns.
Um, yeah, sorry to double dip here. Um, Tyler, I was wondering what, what sort of impact will the pandemic have? You know, I, I, it's, it's having an economic impact, but what sort of impact would it have on meeting those construction or, or homeownership, um, or ability to rent? How, how's that going to play out?
Yeah, I think what we've seen pretty clearly is that demand has not decreased in places like Auburn throughout the Puget Sound. Um, and I think what happens when at some point, hopefully we can all be sitting in a room together and council chambers, um, we'll, we'll see what the housing market looks like then. But certainly I think, um, it, it could mean more demand in places like Auburn throughout the Puget Sound, honestly. Um, and it depends on what uh, the work environment looks like in the future. If folks are going to still be expected to go back to their offices or if it's three days a week or something like that, you know, taking the sounder a few days a week changes, you know, two or three days a week changes people's decisions for housing and, and employment locations in different ways. So, um, I, I think, I think we'll see what'll happen, but so far there hasn't been a huge negative impact to housing demand. And I know that the builders are trying to, to meet that demand as quickly and as efficiently as they can as well.
Thank you.
Director Tate.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, and maybe this is kind of provides a little bit of a summary note on this item, but I want to thank the council members for the thought-provoking questions. It's hard to answer some of the questions frankly, and we're in this mode of uh, developing data, uh, and understanding the conditions and the trends and what we need to accomplish as we look forward. So the Housing Action Plan that, uh, this existing conditions report, uh, will inform is going to give us some of the guidance and help us answer some of the questions and tell us some of the things to be thinking about as we update our next housing element. And our housing element and our comprehensive plan, which have to be updated by twenty twenty-four, uh, need to answer a lot of these questions, need to answer and, and provide direction to, uh, to us as a community, and we're all involved in that, making those decisions. So when we talk about increasing density or allowing duplexes or multifamily, we have to also dig really deep into our transportation or utility infrastructures to make sure that we're coordinating with our Public Works Department and those capital investments because those have been designed to serve a certain density and a certain amount of growth. And some of the, you know, we have to recheck those assumptions and this dovetails nicely into the fact that, that, that King County right now is working, Pierce County as well, are working through growth projections and population allocations for each of the city in order to meet growth management and Puget Sound Regional Council, uh, growth targets. So there's a lot of moving parts that are happening at once. And, uh, then you add in a layer of, uh, South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. Uh, as Tyler mentioned, I mean, this whole group, this, these six cities are working on the same set of questions. Uh, because we're all in this together as we, as we work to solve housing issues and shortages. Um, so I just wanted to add those other pieces because this, this is, this is a variable and a much bigger formula, much bigger uh, discussion that's going on, uh, regionally as well. And, um, uh, this will help inform how Auburn approaches its part. So thank you very much for all of the good questions and, uh, it is helpful, very much helpful.
Thank you, Jeff. And, uh, Tyler, thank you very much. Your presentation is, is right on target. Um, I served on the King County Affordable Housing Committee and have been in, uh, the affordable housing, uh, realm for, uh, over thirty years. And, uh, you know, this whole process we're going through is a true struggle and, um, I'm so glad to see that your strategies include the preservation of existing housing. That's such a key part of what we do and how we continue to provide, uh, housing at various levels, but especially for the affordable housing needs. And, uh, council, I know you've, you've heard me do say this before, but, you know, as we've talked, um, you know, the Affordable Housing Committee and Pierce County Regional Council has identified the need overall. Tyler gave us a great presentation of what we need in Auburn. And again, you're looking at the need of two hundred and forty-four thousand units, uh, between, um, by twenty forty, with forty thousand of those units, uh, that were projected between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-four, with the cost of those forty thousand units being approximately eighteen billion dollars. So we're not talking inexpensive housing to be built. So you're looking at nearly four hundred dollars a square foot to build housing. And, uh, that includes the affordable housing. And of course, as we talked, you know, our, our knee that we're focusing on and, and Tyler's pointed this out is the housing at fifty percent AMI and under with the greatest need between zero and thirty. And Tyler very magnificently pointed out that is the hardest population to serve because that's the deeply subsidized housing, usually public housing in section eight. So it, it's really interesting to see, you know, where we are in Auburn, what we need, our almost eleven thousand units that we need over the period of time and, and how to get there is kind of part of our, uh, challenge as well, council, what we need to look at of setting our path forward. Councilmember Baggett made a very good comment related to the types of housing. Um, you know, do we look at the upzoning like we did in downtown and, you know, go six, seven, eight stories or more and, and build the, uh, you know, the big vertical construction to get us to the point where we need to, to, uh, fill the gap, if you will. Um, you know, we're in the major subdivisions of all single-family homes and Tyler mentioned the duplex, triplex, you know, fourplexes and such. That probably should be the trend as we go forward to fill the need, especially as, as Bob mentioned. You know, we don't have a whole lot of billable land, uh, left at Auburn, uh, at that point. So redevelopment's a key factor, but billable land is at a, is at a premium right now. Uh, Tyler, it's also great the way you pointed out the, uh, the AMI income levels and the thirty percent of cost and council members turns related to cost burden. Uh, it's interesting because in my opinion, and I think others' opinions as well, uh, Auburn and the other South County, uh, cities, we are victims of the Seattle Bellevue Index. So as the rents in Seattle and Bellevue go, so do the rents in South County. And, um, you know, we look at the fifty percent AMI of, uh, paying thirty, no more than thirty percent of the income, we're talking about eleven hundred dollars a month for rent. It's hard to find a place in Auburn at eleven hundred dollars, even some of the ones that are considered to be most affordable, uh, for one-bedroom apartments are twelve hundred dollars a month in Auburn. As you mentioned, the two-bedrooms are about fourteen hundred dollars a month. So that puts both the fifty percent AMI of a two-person household and a four-person household potentially being, being cost burdened overall. So, and I'm very glad that where you pointed out, uh, the breakdown of the need, you know, we're looking at nearly seventeen hundred units of zero to thirty percent housing. And again, that's the most difficult housing to build. And about half of what Tyler has projected for the need is needed for those that are, uh, eighty percent of AMI and under. So that becomes our true challenge. As Tyler mentioned, we look at the workforce housing issue, usually sixty, eighty percent. And, uh, you know, how do we meet those needs as well? So, um, we have a long way to go, council, and our factors of reviewing the data, looking at the information and coming up with policies that, uh, we can develop to help move this needle in the right direction. But it's a true challenge and I, I commend you, Tyler, your staff and the work that you've done of getting to this point and definitely look forward to the future, uh, as we go forward with this. So again, thank you so much. And, uh, council, we have any other questions for Tyler? Right. And, uh, Jeff, Jeff Dixon and, uh, Jeff Tate, you, you and your guys and your, and your staff, thank you so much for all the work you're putting into this as well. And I know we as a council look forward to the future presentations and, uh, doing our part to, uh, help to, we can do to, uh, get our housing needs in Auburn met at the timeframes that you've projected. So appreciate it. Any last words, Tyler?
No, thank you all for the time and the discussion. I, I, you know, you've all, you've all dug deep and you asked good questions and, um, and we'll, we'll get back to you on some of those things that you asked for. So thanks, thanks again for the time.
Thank you very much. All right. Okay, council, um, what I'm going to do is I'm going to have us move into two other presentations. I'm going to suggest after that we take a break, uh, because we do have a fairly long presentation on item three E. So let's go ahead and move forward with our next item, which was our police advisory committee update with Chief O'Neill.
Thank you, council. I'm going to go ahead and, uh, share my screen here. Sorry, I'm experiencing some technical difficulties. All right, here we go. If, uh, you recall, we started our police advisory committee, uh, back in October. That was our first meeting. Uh, since then, we've had five, uh, meetings as part of the committee. We've been able to fill twenty-four of our twenty-five positions. And we're still looking for a member to fill the LGBTQIA plus position. Um, the goals of police advisory committee are to provide recommendations to the chief of police based on community concerns. The committee has come up with their top three priorities, which are concerns related to homelessness, uh, concerns related to repeated crimes against businesses. And they have an overall goal of reducing officer-involved shootings to zero. Again, our first meeting was in October. Uh, the agenda for this meeting was introductions, committee rules and expectations of the group. We held our second meeting in November. Um, during that meeting, we did a, uh, we had a presentation. There was an overview of the Auburn Police Department. Uh, this was the same presentation that I did for, uh, council early in twenty twenty. Uh, the members of the committee were also given a homework assignment. Uh, they were instructed to talk to their neighbors, friends, other, um, members of the community for the group they represent and find out what they wanted from their police department, what their biggest concerns were. There was a common theme that came back from that homework assignment. Uh, the top priorities were neighborhood safety, homelessness, vandalism of businesses, crime rates and overall, uh, community safety. We had our third meeting in December, uh, which was a police accountability, uh, presentation. Again, that was the same presentation that I did for council last fall. Uh, and there was also a series of questions that were submitted by PAC, uh, members. Uh, I've included in your packet, uh, each of those questions and then, uh, the answers for them, which were, uh, shared with the pack. January, we had our fourth meeting and this is where the group really came together to identify their top three priorities, which again, more homelessness, uh, protecting our businesses and a goal of zero officer-involved shootings. We were also briefed on the December officer-involved shooting that occurred. And we discussed court filing guidelines, resources for individuals suffering from homelessness, addiction problems and mental health issues. In February, Kent Hay came in and presented to the pack as we started talking about actionable, uh, items uh, related to their, uh, agenda and their, and their goals. So Kent Hay came in and presented information about homelessness, resources available and the, uh, strategy of addressing uh, this as a community issue. Uh, he also discussed, uh, the city's Consolidated Resource Center. Uh, Harry Boucher came in from the city prosecutor's office and talked about, um, the court process for charging and resolving criminal cases involving trespass, theft, shoplift and drug paraphernalia. Uh, Harry also provided a presentation on community court and the resources that will be available at the all-in-one center. Uh, the city attorney Kendra Como presented information about litigation in the King County inquest. Uh, the PAC was briefed, uh, on completed internal investigations that occurred in January and PAC members began signing up to attend APD training. Uh, one of the expectations of being a member of the PAC is to attend, uh, at least one training session per year. Our next steps are to continue recruiting to fill the open LGBTQIA plus position. We're also looking to get more engagement and information sharing, uh, which we will incorporate once we select and hire a PIO for the police department. Um, we're also hoping to, uh, create a, uh, PAC newsletter to share with our community and our PAC website. Um, we're going to pass, uh, we're in the process of getting the member names posted to the PAC website. Um, where we've also created a email address for the community to ask questions of the PAC. These steps have been finalized by IT and we should have that information up and running by March. And then PAC members have requested to present the council, uh, outside of the police department. So we're in the process of making arrangements for informal, uh, the informal leaders of the PAC to come in and actually, uh, present the city council in March during a study session about, um, their actionable items and, uh, the direction they would like to go as a PAC. So that is the end of my presentation and, uh, a brief update on where we're going. This has been a, uh, a lengthy process. I'm sure as you can imagine, when you bring, uh, twenty-five individuals together and create a new committee, there's a lot of ideas. There's the storming, norming and conforming phase of any group. And, uh, it takes a little bit of time to, uh, identify what the role of a group's going to be and uh, kind of work out some rough spots and start working together as a team. But, um, that's where this group and the organization is. And I think we're going to start uh, some, seeing some actionable, uh, items from them as we move forward and kind of start putting, uh, some plans in place. So are there any questions at this time?
Thank you, chief. Any questions, council on the pack for the chief? Councilmember Sterns and Councilmember Mollina.
Um, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, thank you, chief, uh, for the presentation. I'm just wondering, does, does the PAC have like a mission or a vision statement?
We do not have a, uh, mission or a vision statement, uh, created yet. Um, that'll be something that we need to work on and continue to develop. I think now that we have identified, uh, our top three goals for this year, that is, um, probably some of the next steps that we need to start taking in our meetings. Um, one, one thing that makes it, uh, challenging to accomplish things like that is we, we have two hours a month to meet. And then we get in there and we get a conversation going and then questions come up and, uh, we discuss things related to policing in the community. And before we realize it, that two hours is gone.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Mollina, I believe your question may have been answered.
Uh, no, my question is to, um, you said that one of the months on the PAC went out and talked to their neighbors and their community about what were their main issues. Um, I was trying to see what were some of those things that came up as some of the main issues and has there been a, a really good, um, outreach and a lot of responses from the community when the PAC has went out to talk to their, to the people out there?
Yeah. So the issues and concerns that came up, uh, where a lot of folks reported that, uh, they're concerned about crime involving juveniles in their neighborhood. Uh, they're concerned about homelessness. Uh, they're concerned about, uh, petty thefts and vandalism, uh, that's occurring to their businesses. Um, and they are again, uh, doing that outreach now through their own social media sites and pages, their personal Facebook pages or, uh, the Nextdoor app, uh, and stuff like that. And so, uh, when we meet for our March meeting, they're going to start, uh, compiling all that information, uh, for the presentation that they want to make the council in March.
Um, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Rome.
Thank you, De, thank you, Deputy Mayor Decorsi. Uh, my question has to do with, uh, the governance, uh, aspect for, uh, the PAC. Uh, are there, you, you mentioned that there's, uh, the folks that are providing leadership, uh, to, uh, in one of your statements earlier, uh, how is that, is there an official governance structure at all? And how's, how is that working or anticipated to work?
No, so I'm, I'm the, uh, chair of the committee. No, so I'm, I'm the chair of the committee. Commander Adams is the co-chair. And then Pastor LaShawn Lambert is the other co-chair. And he was a de facto co-chair by way of process. He was there from the beginning and helped create this police advisory committee with Commander Adams and myself. And then obviously, you know, when you put any group together with a purpose, some individuals naturally identify themselves as informal leaders. So I would say there's, you know, some informal leaders within the group that bring regular, consistent ideas and help push the, an agenda or help with structure and organization. But they don't have a formal governing role within the committee, if you will.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, if I might, one more question? Thank you, sir. Who sets the agenda and how is that done?
Thus far, the agenda has been set by myself, Commander Adams, and Pastor Lambert, to just kind of get us going on, on the direction we're going to take. But as we move forward from here, Pastor Lambert is going to take more of an active role in setting that agenda and helping to guide the police advisory committee so that they can be guided more by the members and take on more of an advisory role. To me, the first couple of months were really to lay foundation and give them background information on, on the police department and policing in our city.
Okay. Up, just one last thing, if I could. If you continue to have trouble finding the LGBTQ individual, you know, I've worked in the, with community partners in my regular job. And if I can be of assistance, please feel free to reach out, Chief O'Neil.
That'd be great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions for the chief counsel? All right, let's move on to our domestic violence presentation with Chief O'Neil and City Attorney Cobble.
Okay, thank you, counsel. I'm going to turn it over to Detective Hope and Harry Boucher at this time.
Hello, I'm Detective Hope with, obviously, Auburn PD. I'm going to pull up my PowerPoint here for you. Oh, it's not sharing on the right screen. Here we go.
Detective Hope, we can see it.
You can. Okay, good. I was making sure. I have three screens here, so sometimes it switches on me. I want to make sure it's there.
Looked at earlier.
I was tasked of coming up with some information, just a little statistics of 2018 through 2020, with some specific questions about COVID, you know, interaction with domestic violence. Have we seen an increase, a decrease, kind of what the correlation was? And then also about firearms as they are becoming more and more, I guess, recognized as a danger for domestic violence. So that was kind of what I was tasked with doing. Go ahead and get started here. If you do have questions, save them to the end, and I'd be happy to answer the best I can. So definition, before we start talking about domestic violence, I'm going to kind of refresh some memories and let you guys know what RCW and the state considers domestic violence. It's harm, injury, infliction of fear, threat of imminent harm, and assault, sexual assault, stalking. That is what the violence consists of for majority of the cases. As far as what makes it domestic is the relationship. So the relationship would either be dating, marriage, family relations, intimate relationship. That's defined by RCW. If you have further questions on that, I can definitely read the verbatim. But in general, it's either a dating relationship or related by blood, living together in the household. So here's kind of a summary of the cases that were sent to the prosecutor's office in 2018 and 20. So 2018 is the blue bar, 2019 is the orange, and the gray is 2020. So I've included the total cases that were sent, charged, and declined. These numbers were sent to me from the prosecutor's office. Harry, feel free to jump in whenever you want. Are you there, Harry?
I am, but the host muted me, so I wasn't sure if I was supposed to jump in or not.
Okay.
If I, if I can, and you want me to do that at this point, I certainly will. This is, I'm Harry Boucher from the prosecutor's office. Obviously, I've met most, if not all, of you before. And I was asked to add to the presentation regarding some charging numbers. Now, these, the numbers and charging doesn't tell the full story of everything that we do in our domestic violence prosecution in our cases. But it is a, an important factor. And so we've gone through the last three years of the charging data here. And the last few years have been a rough, a rough time for our office in charging, you know, across the board. And domestic violence is, you know, no exception to that. There are a number of things that I am seeing that contribute to that. And I'd like to spend a couple of minutes to go through those with you. There's probably a number of other things as well. But some of the big things that I'm seeing, first off, is obviously COVID. And I'm going to mention that first because that's in the forefront, I think, of most everybody's mind. This slide number four here that we're looking at, and in the following slide is number five, and that details quarter by quarter in 2019 versus 2020, to see the differences between those two years and what affects, you know, COVID has, has had. Cases that we have seen, domestic violence cases, increased slightly in 2020 in the COVID area, in COVID era. And there's probably a number of reasons for that, that you can identify. But there has been a slight increase. But what also comes with the COVID era that we've had throughout the majority of 2020 and into this year, obviously, is substantially reduced ability to bring our cases to court. We have had no ability to have jury trials, so we don't have a logical conclusion to our cases at the moment. Now, we've been going kind of, I want to say, kind of month by month, we get updates from the court. And we're supposed to have a meeting with the court this week about March, our March jury trial term, and whether or not we'll be able to have cases go forward or not. But as we sit here, the cases continue to stack up that are set for trial but have no ability to actually be tried. Obviously, what goes with that is fewer hearings are being held in person. And part of resolving cases and getting them through the system requires in-person hearings at some moments in cases, guilty plea cases and other types of resolution hearing, sentencings. The court obviously wants people to be in person, but there's a, you know, reduced ability to do that because of social distancing concerns and some other things that are brought about. Bookings are down. The ability to arrest people on warrants, the police's ability to do that is, is reduced. The threshold for being able to book people who fail to appear for hearings and such are, are down, which means that cases aren't resolving as efficiently, as efficiently as they could or perhaps should. On the sentencing side, some domestic violence programs are affected. They are considered essential businesses, but some of the programs, the way that they are designed, cannot have the in-person contact that their traditional programs and activities would have. Wait lists for certain treatment programs are kind of going up. The case types that we are seeing for domestic violence charging, the increase, I'm seeing more cases that are folks who are simply hooped up together, not working, not able to go anywhere, and are having the attendant frustrations with that. Seeing an awful lot more of cases where parents and kids, they're, they're adult children who are homeless or perhaps drug-addled, and they're living at home. They have nowhere else to go. And attended cases, whether it's assault or trespassing at the home, or refusing to leave, damaging property, things like that. But overall, COVID has had a really substantial impact on our ability to bring forth the cases officially and get them resolved in court. The second factor I want to point out that has really had a major impact on the city's prosecution office is King County felony declines. That's something I know that all of you have heard about before in various contexts. It continues to be a difficulty for us. I will tell you that in 2016, our office prosecuted twenty-four cases that were declined by King County. Last year, that number was over three hundred. It has increased dramatically. And it shows no signs of slowing down, quite truthfully. For example, the latest King County guideline that is changing, to my understanding, is theft. So under state law, everything above seven hundred and fifty, every theft value over seven hundred and fifty is a felony. For a number of years in King County, it was over a thousand. That is going to be increased to over two thousand, which means we are going to get a greater and greater share of, of those kinds of cases. And drug-related cases and felonies, property-related felonies show no signs of, of slowing down. We continue to get those cases absorbing an increasing share of our caseload and our ability to, to move our cases. And then finally, what we're seeing over time is the number of hearings that we're having in court has been steadily increasing. Over the last ten years, that number of hearings has doubled. So each case that we file basically is taking twice as long to get to a resolution. And so we're spending more time in court on fewer cases. And because more of our case process is being consumed with each case, our ability to file cases is reduced. We have the same staffing level. We have the same court facility level that we have always had, two judges, two courtrooms. We don't have any additional place to put cases and have them heard. And so with that, if we spend more time on the cases that we have, your overall cases can be filed. So some solutions that, you know, we're, we're working on to try to prioritize things and try to balance things. One thing I'm in the process of is working with our HR to contact the court and get some data that they have on the cases that we file to make sure that their set of data and ours matches as closely as it can so that we identify what cases are being filed and what are being consumed in the system and how they are being handled. And the other thing that obviously we've heard about a lot is community court. And community court, the idea there is that certain types of crimes, a lot of drug-related crimes and property crimes, are moved out of our traditional court system into a community court facility. And the hope there is that if they, if we do that, that perhaps that would free up our traditional court for other, other types of charges that we would traditionally work on. And so those are my comments. I obviously am open to questions about anything, any of this part of the presentation or any aspect of domestic violence prosecution, or any, any aspect of prosecution that we do. I'd be more than happy to try to answer it. But those are my comments on the prosecution-related slides. I'm sorry?
We do have more slides for you as well.
Yes, okay.
So any questions currently for Prosecutor Boucher? All right, moving on. Next slide is the COVID impact. We talked about it a little bit. You do see a slight increase. First quarter was, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Counselor Member Sterns and I had our hands up, so I'm sorry.
I couldn't see them.
Yep, I couldn't see them either. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Mollenga.
Yes, really quickly, the cases that were on the graph, are these all the domestic violent cases, or these are other ones as well? Because I think the, our attorney was talking about some other ones too, so I was getting confused as well. We're looking at on the graph.
This one that we're looking at here is domestic violence cases.
Okay, thank you.
Right, Counselor Member Sterns and then Counselor Member Jay Rogers, go ahead.
Hi, I, I wanted to know, on that graph on the far left-hand column, is, is that the number of arrests?
No, that is not the number of arrests. The total number of DV cases we have in a later slide, these were cases that were referred to the Auburn Prosecutor's Office, including D. declines from King County and referred to as misdemeanors by the police department.
Okay, so we have the arrest number in a different slide.
We have the total domestic violence cases, yes.
Oh, do we have an arrest number?
I do not believe we do. Those are
Is that something we could get, or?
It would take a lot of man-hours.
Oh.
But it could be done.
Okay.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So when I look at this graph, we had a total of eight hundred and fifteen prosecutors' DV cases for 2020. And I believe the prosecutor, Harry Boucher, just said that three hundred was denied by King County. So that means we must have denied about three hundred and twelve as well as the city?
No, the three hundred that were declined by King County are the total number of all cases that were felonies that we prosecuted. So five years ago, it was, it was twenty, it was twenty cases five years ago. Now it's over three hundred. And that includes drugs. That includes all the property crimes and everything. But it's, the point of it is that we're turning our focus to those. And you, as you know, if, if we don't do that, they don't get charged. They just, nothing happens. And so the, the question is, how do we prioritize cases that we traditionally could and should be doing at the misdemeanor level versus these new cases that are coming in and, you know, consuming resources and pressing up cases out? And that's the, the struggle that we're having. And it's really gotten acute and really has increased dramatically over the past few years. And as I say, it's, it's continuing to go that way, from all, all signs point that way, at least.
And I'd like to, I'd like to add that as far as domestic violence cases, they are the toughest to prosecute to keep the victim on board. And as the prosecutor was stating, a lot of cases now have double or triple the hearings and the, before it ever gets to trial. The longer the case drags out, the harder it is to keep the victim on board. So in addition to the difficulties finding courtroom space and being able to hold a trial, it's keeping that victim on board the entire time.
Okay, so how do we, as a community, protect the victim?
You mean what tools are available in the court system?
Yes.
When a charge is filed, well, it can be when a charge is filed or if a charge even is not filed, individuals have the ability to petition for no-contact orders. They can do it on their own. We get them as a part of our criminal cases.
There's more coming in the presentation.
Pretty routinely. Sometimes the court will deny our request. Okay, sometimes the court will deny our requests for that or modify our requests. For example, we'll say, you know, something like no hostile contact, but we'll allow you to contact each other. So there's kind of a range of things that, that a court can do. The other big aspect of it is, which is coming, is a little bit later in the presentation, is firearms. It is mandatory now, when a no-contact order is entered, is to also order firearm surrender. And the court oversees that with the order and then has a hearing set up to check to make sure that the person has, if they have firearms to surrender, that they have in fact done that.
Okay, so at the end of the day, this chart is really not showing the real issue then. Because what I see is, is charged for this year, I mean, sorry, last year, we only have two hundred. But in reality, we have a lot more because they were declined because we didn't have the time or the space for it.
Correct. We, we had to focus on, because of these external pressures that we're having, we have to focus on the most pressing of the cases that we receive. Because if, if we, you know, take all of these, then that's other cases that we can't do. That's the, you know, drug users or trespassers, or, you know, we have to do it all. We have to do every kind of case that's out there and all the You know, take all of these, then that's other cases that we can't do. That's the, you know, drug users or trespassers or, you know, we we have to do it all. We have to do every kind of case that's out there and all the competing concerns. You heard the. The uh presentation by Chief O'Neill. I did present last time at the uh at the meeting of the um. Of the pack through the police department. And a lot of members of the community are there and they're concerned about drugs. They're concerned about thefts. They're concerned about vehicle prowling. They're concerned about U I's, domestic violence, the whole gamut of of crimes. A lot of them are business owners. And they're concerned about drugs and um, you know, the the crime that goes along with it, property damage assaults, you name it. And so those things are increasing um because they are not being prosecuted by another prosecutor's office that traditionally has done that. Now we are having to do all of those things. And so that moves in and forces out other cases that we would be doing.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have uh two other council questions. And then after that council, I'm going to suggest again that we let the uh presenters finish their presentation and then we'll follow up with questions at the end. So Councilmember Trump, Manuel, go ahead.
You know, I'll just go ahead and I'll let him continue because it, I just have a comment on what he had to say, so I can hold off.
Okay, great. Councilmember Sterns?
Um, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh I I just wanted to know, do do we in Auburn, do we have a domestic violence victims advocate or have we have one in the past?
Through the court, we no longer do. Um we used to have one in the past and Harry might be able to give details on what happened to the position. There are community advocates that we refer people to, and with the felonies, there is a felony King County advocate.
That's correct. Uh we did have um an advocate that was in our city attorney's office. She resigned and we we do have a domestic violence dedicated paralegal that works with the city attorney's office but is not an advocate outside of our office. And mainly that's um to ensure assistance to the prosecutor's office and maintaining confidentiality within of the legal department.
So is that position then just closed or is that still open?
The the advocate?
Yes, the advocate.
It is no longer a position in the legal department.
All right, thanks.
All right, Deputy Mayor, am I good to continue?
You are good to go, Detective.
All right, so moving on. We kind of went over this slide and over some of the difficulties of why there's less charge than in prior years. Here's the COVID impact. As you see, there is a slight increase. Um it's. I'd say it was more dramatic in the first quarter as that was when people were first hit with the stresses of COVID, being confined, being, you know, in quarantine. And it was just, I think, very difficult as a society to kind of adjust to it. I'm sure there's lots more that we could go into about that, but the numbers do show slight increase. Fourth quarter, they started to decrease and that. It's it's a much larger issue and I don't mean to simplify it, but. People may have been getting used to COVID and not as shocked or scared of it as initially when it first came out. Now firearms, we touched on them a little bit. Um that is one of the big focuses that have had lots of improvements with the R C Ws, with the laws written by our legislatures. Some scary facts about firearms is it does increase the lethality to the victim. So the research done by the Taxational Fund to Stop Gun Violence in two thousand nineteen showed four point five million women have been threatened with a gun and nearly one million. Women have been shot or shot at by an intimate partner. That's a lot, okay? A woman is five times more likely to be murdered when her abuser hasn't access to a gun. Obviously, it's easier to kill somebody pulling a trigger than it is by other means. So if the gun is there, it just makes the ease of a murder happen. That's why the legislature has addressed it. So some of the firearm domestic violence laws are, this is taken directly out of a common D V no contact order. And in that order, the defendant's ordered to not obtain, own, possess, or control a firearm. The respondent is ordered to not obtain uh or possess a firearm, other dangerous weapon, or concealed pistol license. And they are ordered to immediately surrender all firearms and other dangerous weapons within the defendant's position or control and any concealed pistol license. And they're ordered to comply with it. And there's a separate order for the weapons. They are advised by the judge at the time the order is issued. They need to sign a form either saying that, yes, I will surrender the guns or I do not have them. They do need to declare that to the court. Now, in order to surrender weapons. We already kind of told you what they are supposed to do. They're supposed to turn them in. That means they bring them to the Auburn Police Department or to the police department within their jurisdiction. And turn them in and we take those and we enter them into property. And they do not get those guns back until the order is lifted or if they're convicted of domestic violence or convicted of a felony, they do not get the guns back at all. And that's the legislature's attempt to get guns out of the hand of domestic violence abusers. Now, we also do what is called removing a gun for safekeeping. So if I, as a patrol officer, go to a domestic violence situation, let's say it's a misdemeanor. I I will use a husband. Often it's it's percentage-wise, it's a male that abuses a female more than the other way around. So let's say a husband punches a wife and he's going to jail for assault. The officers then ask the household, are there firearms in the household? If there is, or if we see firearms, we take those for safekeeping. That doesn't mean we're. Stealing their property and immediately removing those firearms. It's we're taking them now so that they will not be involved in the future. If he's released and there's a future issue. Now, let's say the case is dismissed, then they can petition and get those firearms back. We do not have a legal right to keep them forever. We still have to follow the Constitution and state laws. But what it does is it gives a little screen of safety for the victim. Another way we can take firearms from a home is an extreme risk protection order. I had an example recently where it was a stepson. But mom and dad weren't married, so legally they were not related. They called him stepdad, but legally he wasn't. So there was no no contact order issued between the male and the son because he was too young to be considered a household member. I petitioned for an extreme risk protection order to remove the firearms from the home. Because of some issues, I won't go into too many case details, but there was enough details that it was dangerous to have firearms in that home. So the order was issued and I have a hearing coming up next month on it to extend the order. So that's another way we can get guns out of the home for domestic violence situations. And as I already mentioned, if you have a conviction for a domestic violence crime or a felony, you cannot possess weapons. Here's some stats on firearms that we have taken as the police department. So again, blue is two thousand eighteen, orange is two thousand nineteen, gray is two thousand twenty. So surrendering, that was where an order was issued and someone was ordered to surrender and bring their fire depart firearms into the police department. We took those guns in, so you see eighteen in two thousand eighteen, fifty-eight firearms were surrendered in two thousand nineteen, twenty-nine firearms were surrendered in two thousand twenty. We also did take some guns for safekeeping and we did take surrendered and taken C P L. C P L is just concealed pistol license. We also had some B B guns and compound bows surrendered. Um high-powered B B guns can cause injury, so they were surrendered as a other dangerous weapon. Now, this was what we were touching on earlier about total domestic violence cases. This is not what was sent to the prosecutor. This was not what was declined. This is total cases into the police department for domestic violence. So this one, this slide was not by me, so the colors changed, but purple's two thousand eighteen, black is two thousand nineteen, white is two thousand twenty. So on the left is a verbal domestic. A verbal domestic is when we go to a nine-one-one call of a domestic dispute and no crime is discovered, no arrests made. So we have quite a few of those every day, every all year long. So that's kind of a conglomeration of the numbers. Order violations, this is when we arrest somebody who's violating the no contact order. I showed you the language of a firearm. We do a traffic stop. And somebody says, I have a firearm in the vehicle and there's a no contact order where he's prohibited from having that firearm, they would be arrested for an order violation. They could also be charged with a weapons violation as well. And if these are more for, if there's an order violation between person A and B. And they're violating it, the person who is not supposed to have any contact with person A gets arrested. That's what the order violation charges are. Our felony order violations, what makes it a felony is if there's an order in place and there's an assault. Or if there's an order in place and they have more than two convictions for order violations. Those are the triggers that make an order violation a felony. And then last is just a total of all domestic violence cases that the police department had in those years. So if you take all cases together, there was not an increase between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty. So that is the conclusion of my presentation. And I guess we will go on to questions unless, Harry, do you have any anything to add?
I don't think so, unless there are questions.
I see.
Oh, Mayor Backus.
Thank you. Uh I believe Jeff Tate is on the call, but and can chime in on this if you would, Jeff, but. Uh Councilmember Sterns, you asked a question about advocacy. And while that job description is no longer within the legal department and and it wasn't necessarily the job description of an advocate. Previously, there is significant funding that goes to agencies that work with domestic violence victims. Jeff, I think you're on the call. If you are, would you mind sharing a little bit about that, please?
Yeah, sure. I I, in fact, in your packet, I would just orient counsel to pages one twenty through one twenty-seven. Uh Joyce Scott, uh our community services manager, uh provided a. Uh an overview of domestic violence support services that the city funds. And I thought it was an important contextual piece for city council to see. So there are five agencies that are called out. Um and this is through human services funding and that grant application process that we routinely um. Uh talk to cap city council about. Uh so there's five agencies listed and you'll see in the in the initial intro of that memorandum. That the that those agencies collectively have provided. Uh it looks like about twenty-four hundred hours of service uh or services to a hundred and sixteen of our residents. To support domestic violence um support uh to victims. So as you scan down through those pages, uh it does break down by each agency, the number of. Uh individuals that have been helped, uh the number of hours uh by agency, uh what our targets were versus what the actuals were. And then what those numbers look like in two thousand nineteen versus two thousand twenty as well. So just wanted to make sure that that uh city council was. Aware of the inclusion of that in the packet and um uh to know that uh there is funding support being put out into our community to to help uh. Survivors or those who are experiencing uh domestic violence.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Councilor Trump.
Yes, I thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um yeah, I just wanted to thank uh our prosecutor attorney Boucher uh for saying that you're going to check to make sure that City of Auburn is uh being. You know, you're going to check to make sure that your cases and everything are documented because every time I attend. Our domestic violence task force, the City of Auburn has not been shown. And um so I'm glad to see that you're going to check because it'd be nice to see at these meetings that. What the City of Auburn is doing. Um last meeting, they had the top five cities in the King County and um. According to their population and our city wasn't on there was Seattle, Bellevue, Kent, Renton, and Federal Way. And Kent is very involved in this, so it's his chief of police. So um thank you for saying that you're going to check and see why our city is not being. Uh noticed or, you know, um. You know, mention on what's going on in our city with our domestic violence. And our other cases.
Thank you, absolutely.
And it's nice to finally meet our detective for domestic violence as well. Thank you.
The other questions, counsel? All right, Detective Hulk and. And Harry Boucher, once again, thank you for your presentations and for all the hard work that you're doing uh to work on this issue. It's an extremely important issue, as you mentioned. And I know your counsel is very much in tune with uh the what's going on with domestic violence in our community. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, at this point in time, uh let's take a break. Um we have still quite a bit to go on the agenda. So let's go ahead and take a break and reconvene at seven thirty-five. So recess for about five minutes. Thank you. Okay, just wait a minute or so for other council members to get back.
Councilmember Sterns, if you're back, can you turn your camera on? Councilmember Sterns, if you're back, if you could turn your camera on. Deputy Mayor, if you want to get started, I can just make a note when he comes back in if he's not back.
Sean, we will do that. Okay, we will call the meeting back to order. And we will now continue on with our agenda varieties for council discussion and ordinance number 6814 with Director Thomas Jamie.
Good evening, counsel. This is the moment everybody's been waiting for. I'm here to talk about our, the proposed BNO tax code that we've been talking about for the last year. More specifically, we've been talking about this more intensely since the biennial budget process over the last six months because this would be something that would be impacting our 2021 and our 2022 biennial budget. So I am going to share my screen to start the presentation. And.
I'm just going to note for the record that Councilmember Sterns has returned.
He. Hold on. Technical difficulties also. All right, can everybody see my screen? All right, sorry about the, the slow getting the screen. You think you do this enough times, you, you've got it down, but like every time I do it, it's like doing it again. So we're here to talk about the BNO tax today. And now if. There it goes. So what we're going to talk about today really are the, the proposed code that, that you guys have seen. It's in your council packet. And we're really, we're reviewing the, the optional elements of the code. So what the code starts is that we have a model ordinance that we must follow that is required by RCW. And then there are certain portions of that code that are really up to us to decide as well as optional things that we can add into the code. So those would be additional exemptions and deductions. So the most important pieces to this code that would make the code unique to Auburn and to make it our code would be the proposed tax rates and thresholds, a square footage tax that we've been discussing that would impact warehouses and wholesale activity, tax credits that we could offer businesses. And then again, the, the optional elements of deductions and exemptions that we have built into our code. And really, most of those optional elements that we're going to be reviewing tonight all stem from a lot of the feedback that we've received from the business community in a series of either one-on-one conversations that we had with them, but primarily a series of BNO presentation meetings that we had with different business sectors hosted by the Auburn Chamber of Commerce, which most of you participated in at least one or more of those meetings. So a brief overview on what the goal of the BNO tax would be for the City of Auburn in context of our general fund. So as you all recall, we had, we had Burke Consulting come in. They did really a fiscal sustainability study over the city's general fund finances and how, how our revenues and expenditures in the general fund look from now going out eight and 10 years. And what we're seeing is an approximate $10 million gap between our revenues and expenditures each year. Smaller in the, the first couple of years, but really an expanding gap every year. And that is an approximate $10 million gap every year, so that would be compounding. So what we need to do, and this was part of our council retreat discussions that we had had almost exactly a year ago now, was what are ways that we can help fill that gap? And one of those elements was the BNO tax. And part of our plan that we were built, that we were moving forward with and particularly our 21, 22 biennial budget was to generate $6 million with the BNO tax to help fill that $10 million gap. And then use other, either revenue sources or cost recovery model amendments to help make up the difference in our, in our revenue and expenditure gap. So moving forward, this is, this is things that we've talked about. This is something that we've really talked really heavily with the business community also. But what are the factors that were really kind of guiding the principles when we were building the BNO tax? And that is that we wanted to keep the rates as low as possible in order to achieve our $6 million. We don't see this as a money grab. We're not trying to fix all of our problems on the backs of the business community and trying to generate all the money that we possibly can with max rates. We really want to keep the rates as low as possible. We want to protect small and local business. And we also were keeping in mind that there are certain industries that just by their nature have generally smaller profit margins. So for instance, retail generally is commonly known to have a smaller, have smaller profit margins. That doesn't mean it's only retail. There are certain types of businesses within each business category that does sometimes experience tighter margins than maybe their other counterparts within their category. And thinking services in particular, not all service providers have, have wider margins than retail, but some of them do. So these are all things that we were trying to consider when we're talking about protecting small business and protecting maybe more vulnerable businesses from a BNO tax. So with that, I'm just going to jump right in. And this is a lot of information. This is the proposed rates by categories. So doing a lot of massaging with data that we have and trying to take all of those considerations, those, those items and taking those items into consideration that I talked about on the previous slide. And how do we come up with the most equitable tax rate? And the most unpalatable tax rate for each different industry? So you can see the RCW actually identifies retail, wholesale services, manufacturing, and other categories. In that's, those are the different categories we have to identify within our code itself. And these are the proposed rates. So in order to come up with an estimated tax that each of those categories would generate, we are taking what we, the base revenue from those businesses and, and the activity that is actually being generated in Auburn. And from that, we're backing out businesses that don't generate more than $500,000 a year. So that's the threshold, the, the baseline threshold that we're starting with is that you would be exempt from the business and occupation tax if you're not generating at least $500,000 annually. And we're also taking into consideration that service, the service category and the wholesale category, not 100% of the revenue that those, that the businesses in Auburn are generating actually belong to Auburn. So we subtract out about 50% of the revenue that those businesses generate. And then, and then that would be kind of the adjusted base. And then taking into consideration that about 50%, and another, taking another 50% of the revenue off from all categories, that some of that revenue is deductible or exempt from actually being taxable. So when actually calculating the tax due, we would remove another 50%. I'm, I'm going to, in a, in a few slides, actually walk you through kind of a sample BNO tax calculation so you can better understand what I'm talking about when I talk about the thresholds and exemptions and deductions and how those kind of all factor into a total BNO tax liability for a business. So I know that this might be more conceptual at this point because I'm throwing out a lot of different terms. But these are the assumptions that I, that we've been using in our calculations so we can come up with a good estimate or at least a conservative estimate on the actual tax dollars that we think that these tax rates would generate by category. And you'll also notice, just to point out, like our retail, our retail sector produces the most amount of revenue for the City of Auburn, which is why it just half of a percent, it generates the most estimated tax. Because the total tax that, that, that category produces in the city is just so much higher than any of the other categories. And likewise, you see with wholesale and services, even though they have the highest proposed tax rates, they're quite a bit further behind the retail. But that mostly has to do with the, the assumptions that a lot of that revenue is going to be either deducted or is not apportioned to the City of Auburn. So we can't consider that taxable revenue. So in the end, we estimate with these proposed tax rates about $3.94 million a year in revenue. And obviously, this isn't going to be the other, the whole piece. We'll talk about the square footage tax, the proposed square footage tax in a couple more slides. But I wanted to kind of dive deeper into these proposed BNO tax rates by category first. So what this is, is a comparison. You've seen a similar chart in the past with Burke Consulting. I added a couple more cities to this chart. There's a lot of numbers, but it's actually really simple. It's taking every other city around us or similar cities that are around us. Bellevue is probably the, the biggest outlier in this list of similar cities and their rates by each category. And taking our, our actual revenue generated in Auburn and applying their tax rates to our revenue. So assuming that we adopted Bellevue's tax rates, we would generate a little over $8 million a year, assuming their tax rates. And, and so on down the line. A note on Kent's, they, they have a series of tax rate increases over the next couple of years that take place every year. And since we're not proposing to have this go into effect until January 2022, I thought that it would be most applicable to use their projected 2022 tax rates, which would generate $6.2 million in the City of Auburn if we were to use their rates. Again, the biggest thing that's making us seem so low, our total tax dollars being generated, it's that retailing activity. So in an effort to kind of protect retail business and keeping it at a half, at a half a percent, and it also means much less revenue. Just a slight adjustment in the, in the retail rate actually bumps up the total estimated tax that we would receive up quite a bit. It's pretty, the total tax rate is pretty sensitive to that interest or to the, the tax rate in the retail category. So just something to consider for council to consider, and we'll talk about points of consideration at the end of the presentation, is what would happen? So this is more of a what-if scenario. On the left-hand column, these are the proposed rates that I have right now by category and how much tax revenue that would generate. But let's say we did a more uniform rate. So we applied the same rate, similar to what most cities do, is they apply a uniform rate across all categories. What does that make our estimated tax collection look like at the end of the day? So if we were looking at 0.1% tax, tax rate for all categories, that would bump our estimated tax collection up to 5.13 million. Most cities are right in that 0.1% tax rate category. Or if we even bumped it down just a little bit to near the City of Renton's BNO rates, to 0.085%, that would generate about $4.36 million. Now, the, there is some benefit to actually having uniform rates. And one, it's much more simple to administer from, from the city side. But of course, that's not, that's not what we're here to propose. We're not necessarily trying to advocate for simplicity, although there is a benefit to, to simplicity. But the other question is more of probably like a, just a theological question, which is, do we prefer to shelter some of our tax categories? Like I have over in our proposed variable rate column? Or do we expect or are we going to ask all of the businesses to share the same tax burden? So that is, if you have that, kind of think about that a little bit because I do want to discuss that at the end of the presentation to kind of get a sense for what council, if you, if you have a feeling strongly one way or the other. Just understanding that kind of, it's from the very beginning, our intent was to protect small and vulnerable business. And that is why I have brought up the proposed rates that are variable and structured with a smaller rate for those more vulnerable businesses. So on this slide, this actually gives you, illustrates the impact of those rates on an actual business. So what does that mean for each individual business? I've got the 0.05%, the 0.1%, the 0.15% and the 0.18%. And that represents retail, all other categories, services and wholesale respectively. So wholesale being at the bottom, retail at the top. And most of the categories fall into that 0.1% category. So for a business, if they generate, a business generating $750,000 a year, their annual tax burden at 0.05% would be $375. Likewise, if we're talking a very large retail, a very large retail establishment, and they generated $20 million of taxable revenue in the city at 0.05%, that would be a $10,000 BNO tax bill for the year. So these are all annualized. And then if you go, you can see onward down as, down the list, we get to the 0.18%, so that's for wholesaling activity for a wholesaler with their taxable revenue, not necessarily their total revenue, but their taxable revenue that's apportioned to Auburn. Doing $750,000 a year, their annual tax burden would be 1,350. If they were generating, if their taxable revenue in Auburn was 20 million, their annual tax bill would be 36,000. Something else to consider moving along, and we'll also talk about this at the end, is a tax cap. Some cities have tax caps, some cities don't. And really what this does, it's set up to protect different types of businesses within their city. The City of Renton has a tax cap for their manufacturing sector. Well, I think it's, my guess is it's to help protect the manufacturing sector. But it is a $5 billion revenue tax cap. So any, any revenue generated over $5 billion a year essentially is no longer taxable. So it's a pretty high tax cap, very intentionally, probably protecting just one business in the city because the cap is so large. Kent also has a tax cap and it is for their retail businesses. And it protects any retailers that generate more than $20 million in taxable revenue a year. So I'm not exactly sure which retailers that was. If, if there was a particular retail. Not exactly sure which retailers that um was um if if there was a particular retailer in specifically that that tax credit or that. Um, that that threshold or that tax cap was built in for. But um also something to think about is that would then be protecting your biggest businesses. So that would be kind of in conflict then again with our intention of protecting. Um, small business, but there is uh an argument to be made that we don't want to discourage big business from coming into the city of Auburn either. So um it it is something to consider in the um draft ordinance right now. Um, it mirrors the the very large tax cap that Renton has. I can either eliminate it that I can amend it. Um, but I am, I am curious to see what kind of um thoughts that that the council has on that. And if you would like to move forward with the tax cap and how you'd like that to look. So talk, moving on from talking about rates, we'll talk about the square footage tax. So this is to supplement that BNO tax. We're, I started off the presentation saying that we're hoping our goal is to hit about $6 million generated in BNO tax revenue. Um, with the rates that I've proposed, we're looking at generating about 3.94 million dollars. So obviously, there needs to be something else to supplement. And the square footage tax is, I think, our attempt at trying to make the the tax burden more fair, if you will. Um, because it more fairly captures the services and in the infrastructures that the warehousing and wholesaling activities have. Um, in the in the city of Auburn. Um, for example, um 30% of the gross revenue activity that is generated in Auburn, only 20%. So wholesaling accounts for 30% of the total gross revenue generated in Auburn. But with the tax structure as recommended, only 20% of the tax actually being generated comes from the wholesaling sector. So even at point one percent rate, which is much higher than all of those other categories, they're still their tax burden still isn't. Equal or on the same level as the total amount of revenue and the total amount of activity that is being generated in Auburn. So um if we were to actually lower their point one, their their point one eight percent tax rate to point one percent, like all of the other industries that we're that we're proposing. That would make them only paying 17% of the total tax. So they're going from. Generating a 30%, a very significant portion of the total uh the total revenue um um for them, but only contributing 17% 17% of the total tax. So that would, that is the um, that is the reason um behind the the square footage tax and the reason why it would uh appear more fair in having them pay their their fair share. So this is our proposal for the the square footage tax. Um, it's 10 cents per square foot per quarter for any business. That um for for any warehouse space um greater than 4,000 feet, and this would be for indoor space, indoor warehouse space as well as outdoor warehouse space. Um, the first, the first chart would show you the annual impact on a business that has um a 10 cent. Um, and normally how this tax, the way that the BNO tax is written, the code is written right now, is that they would pay it quarterly. So but the the dollar amounts that I've put into this chart actually reflects annual costs, even though they would be paying it quarterly. So for a 5,000 square foot uh warehouse, um they would pay $2,000 a year. So that would be then um on top of their um of their of their BNO tax. Um, and then the same thing goes if there were a 500,000 square foot uh facility, they'd be paying $200,000 a year. Um. Just kind of a comparison, we don't have, I I was not able to get a lot of really good square foot foot data from existing businesses. I do have some information on some of our largest warehouses in Auburn and the estimate that we have for comparison to kind of give you a a s- a scale. And understand how much 5,000 square feet is. Um, the Safeway distribution center is 524,000 square feet. So that to kind of give you an idea of how big, because I certainly didn't know how big 500,000 square feet is. So that's to give you an idea of how much space we're actually talking about. Um, in total, we have an estimated 3.3 million dollars in total, 3, 3.3 million square feet of warehouse space in Auburn. Um, the bottom chart is a comparison of the of Bellevue and Kent's square foot tax. They also have a square foot tax. Bellevue's is quite large. Um, at 26 point or it yeah, 26.33 cents per quarter. Um, on each square foot that they have, um, that would generate 3.5 million dollars in Auburn if we were applying our square footage. Um, our our warehouse square footage that we have in Auburn. Um, Kent has a nine cent per quarter square foot tax generating 1.2 million dollars. I think what's really important to note, the biggest difference between um our proposed BNO tax language and both Bellevue and Kent. Is that they don't restrict their um tax to just warehousing and wholesaling activities. They apply, they have a separate tax for all business space being used. Bellevue's is the same um across the board there um for both uh warehousing and um just regular office and business space. Kent's is much lower. They charge two cents per square foot for all other business, um for all their business space used in the city of Kent. Um, at this time, I I struck all of that language out of our proposed code. Because again, this is to get not a money grab. It's not how much money we can get right now. Right now, we're trying to fill that $6 million gap. And the the purpose behind the square footage tax is to um get the warehousing um activities, having them generate their fair share and not. Taxing um all of the other business space that we have in Auburn. So that kind of moves into the next part of our code. Um, and I'm sorry, I haven't been uh cross walking this very well. When I say page 40, for instance, this is the page 40 of the BNO code for you looking through your council packet. This is actually page 169 in your overall council packet. I apologize for that. Um, so if you wanted to get caught up in your council packet, it would be page 169 in the full council packet. And we are recommending and proposing a couple of tax credits. Um, the one is the new business tax credit. And this, the purpose behind it would be to promote new businesses and economic growth in Auburn. Um, the way I have it written would be for any new employer coming into Auburn that hasn't operated in Auburn in the last 10 years would be able to qualify for the new business tax credit. And if they're going to be employing at least 20 full time employees or more. Then they would qualify for a thousand dollar credit for each of those employees that they have. So if they had 20 employees, they would receive $20,000 per quarter. Up to $80,000 annually, and they would be eligible for that in the first three years.
Jamie, can you repeat for a second?
Sure.
Um, in our council packets, your presentation of the draft code ends on page 163.
No. And I have.
Oh, it's on page 161.
151.
161.
161.
Council, I'm gonna jump in for a second, and if you're viewing your council packet electronically, the pages may be different than your hard copy. So.
Yeah, I'm looking at my hard copy.
If you reference whether it's a hard copy or electronic copy, this uh most recent packet had an update. So depending on if you printed it before Friday at noon, there was an update.
Okay, so Jamie, could you perhaps just kind of give us the uh the reference of the the topic you're talking about so we can find it in our hard copies? That would help.
Yes, it will save page 40 on the bottom.
Okay, great. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't have the updated one. I apologize. Um, and then, um, so the tax credit would be eligible for the first three years. So then alternatively, the and we can, we'll discuss this also um at the end. Um. You know, we, this is our tax credit. We can write it however we want. If it is a tax credit that we want to keep. We could even consider maybe lowering the total number of FTEs that a business is bringing to the city to five or 10. Really to kind of promote all sorts of different sizes of businesses coming into the city and and providing them a little bit of a tax credit. Um, and maybe not offering such a large credit, but maybe it was, you know, $500 a year or $500 per FTE per quarter. Um, to just to make it more scalable. So um it it really kind of depends, are we trying to attract mid to larger businesses and and not. Scare them away, so to speak, with um a BNO tax? Or do we want to provide an opportunity for any business that is looking um to to come into the city of Auburn and do business? But as it's written right now, um, it's it's language states 20 full time equivalents or more with a thousand dollars, a thousand dollar credit per FTE um per quarter. The second tax credits uh we're proposing is the Business Improvement Area Assessment Credit. So that would really be tailored specifically to the businesses. In the downtown um core that are paying um an annual BIA assessment. And what this would do is it would help mitigate really the impact of both the the assessment fee that they pay is eh on top of a BNO tax. And so how it would work is then at the end of the um either as soon as they've made their um first BNO tax payment of the year, they would be able to. Um, write off 100% of whatever their um assessment fee was for their annual assessment fee for the BIA would have been. So to give you, to talk about, because I I've now talked about the, I've talked about a little bit about exemptions and deductions. I've I've talked about the credit. So I wanted to kind of give you a visual example, and this, this will be something that you can um ponder over. It's more of a, it's a completely hypothetical situation. But my hypothetical business profile is a retailer. So they're at the point oh five percent tax rate. Their total gross revenue for the year is $5 million. They have exempt activities of 275,000. An example of an exempt activity would be like liquor sales. So um a retailer that sells liquor already pays um an excise tax on that. And so therefore, it is actually exempt from the BNO tax. So their exempt liquor sales were 275,000 dollars. They have 1.3 million dollars in deductible activities. Um, so that could be credit losses. So for a retailer that um has lines of credit bad and that they've writ, they're writing bad credit off, that is deductible from your taxable revenue. And then they're also paying um one point or uh what $1,500 a year in a a BIA assessment. So with all those assumptions, um with all of those um assumptions, how they would ta- calculate their tax would look. Um, similar to the calculation to the um right hand side. So they start off with their gross revenue. They're going to deduct all of their exempt activities. And as long as that number in step two is greater than $500,000, they would keep going down the line and billing out their tax return. So they're only deducting $275,000 for exempt activities. They still qualify for the BNO tax. So they'll go to step three to find out what their taxable revenue is. And their taxable revenue is their gross gross revenue less exemptions, less their deductions, which is the 1.3 million dollars. And so now their taxable revenue is 3,425,000 dollars a year. They're going to apply the point oh five percent tax rate, which makes their total annual tax liability 1,712 dollars and 50 cents. Now, again, this is annualized. They're actually going to be paying this on a quarterly basis, um especially a business this large. But this is just to illustrate what their annual tax impact would be and how they go about actually calculating that tax. Now, this business, for instance, has a BIA assessment of $1,500, they would be able to subtract whatever they paid in BIA. So their total tax due to the city at the end of the year would be $212 and 50 cents. This is very simplistic. When you get into the um the service industry and the apportionment tax credit or the the tax calculation when as it relates to. Um, apportionment, it is actually much more complex. But this was more to illustrate what the difference between exemptions, deductions and tax credits are and where they fall into place when calculating your your tax liability. So now to talk about some of the key exemptions and deductions and these, this, I started with really kind of the summary of concerns. Um, the predominant concerns that we heard from the the business community when we met with them um through our series of um chamber facilitated com- uh. Zoom calls with them. Um, and I think that they're all, they're all very legitimate concerns. Most of them were actually already either able to address because of the model ordinance or items that we were able to add into to the code. Um, some of them were not able to address directly. Um, the 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 top, the first three are the three that we were not able to address really directly. And and there's just an overwhelming concern that there are a lot of tight margins um for businesses operating in Washington in general, not necessarily Auburn. But just with the way our our tax structure in in the state of Washington is, um, it makes it difficult to do business in Washington. Um, and I think that the best, the best that I can offer at this point is that we in Auburn are really trying to make a commitment to having as small of a business impact as possible. Um, while being able to still provide the services and and the the infrastructure that those businesses need to continue operating in Auburn. And then offering tax credits for new businesses to help not to try, you know, to to help make it easier for businesses to get their foot in the door in in Auburn. There's a lot of concern that this isn't the right time, particularly with COVID, businesses have taken a a big hit. Um, particularly smaller businesses and retail um restaurants. Um, in in the past year related to COVID, and this just isn't the right time to be implementing a BNO tax. And the best answer I can give to that is that we're not looking at implementing it now. We are looking at January 1, 2022. Um, so hopefully by then we are on the upswing of recovery from COVID and and the impacts on businesses. I don't want to diminish the long lasting effects that COVID does have on businesses and that it's going to take them a while to get um the ground under their feet again. But to just emphasize that 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 there is a little bit of time. We're not trying to pile on and pile on and and further, um, I don't. Uh, for for, there's never really a good time for this tax. I I don't think that there's ever going to be a time if we waited two years from now or if we had done this two years ago, there, it wouldn't have been a good time. So I'm not sure. Um, I understand that COVID has had um a significant impact, but I taxes are never are never are never a good time for adding new ones. Um, kind of on the tails of that is attracting tenant, new tenants in retail space. And um we heard this a lot more from like commercial um landlords who are like, you know, it's it's tough, you know, they're operating on on small profit or on small margins. And it's tough to attract and retain new tenants in those retail spaces. And really, there's kind of two pieces to that, and that was um the new business tax credit that we were talking about. And, you know, what can we do? Maybe that's lowering the proposed tax credits so smaller businesses can take advantage of that tax credit. Um, but also um keeping a small, most of that space that they were concerned about is retail space. So then keeping those rates low for retail um businesses, so it's not as significant of an impact. Um, as as far as tax rate goes on those businesses. Um, it, they didn't call it out. This was more what we heard from the number four was something that we heard from the um car dealerships. And um and and about the trade in values of their vehicles and the losses that they sustain and and the profitability of the sale of new vehicles. Um, there is actually in the model ordinance is um a provision for writing off, this is a deduction for losses on bad debt and then the ca- and cash discounts given. So it's a net, it's a net impact on um when they're calculating their their tax liability, those those items are able to be written off. And I would like to, it's highlighted in yellow because as much as I would like to take credit for adding that into the code, it is actually a model ordinance. It is a requirement that we have that language in there. Number, number five was tuition for private school and daycare provided by church, by churches. I think this has become a bigger concern, particularly with COVID. A lot of parents switch their kids to um. Uh, into daycare and private school um and out of public school in order to get um the face to face learning rather than the virtual learning. Um, there is actually an exemption and a deduction um that addresses um certain types of tuition for private schools and daycares when there it's provided by um religious institutions. Uh, number six is the. Number six is the double taxation for leased space. So kind of dovetailing on the attracting new customers into a retail space and not wanting those tenants to be double spaced or double taxed. Long term rent revenue is not taxable. So as the landlord, the revenue that they're receiving on rents is actually not taxable. There are camp charges, so common area maintenance charges, which are charged back to the tenants for common area maintenance. Those are actually deductible deductible revenues. So they're they're not taxed, neither the landlord or the lessee is actually paying BNO tax on any of that revenue. So that eliminates kind of the double taxation concern. That was really more of a question that the business community had. And this is just to kind of clarify then for counsel that that those provisions are written into the code following the model ordinance language. There was, number seven is taxation on Medicare Medicaid grants, funding from state and local agencies to provide social welfare services. So while we've talked about this before, not necessarily tonight, but in general nonprofits are not exempt or automatically exempt from BNO tax. Because some, some nonprofit organizations do have business type revenue that they generate. And so with the point of our exemptions and deductions then are to identify the types of activities that a nonprofit could do that would be exempt. So not necessarily blanket exempting all nonprofits, but certain activities of nonprofit organizations. And as, and as not even just nonprofit organizations, but any type of social welfare business, whether they're operating for profit or not. There, we have written in provisions into our code to exempt any of the subsidies or even professional services payments that they receive from state and local agencies for the social welfare services that they provide. So if they're providing social welfare services, whether they're contracting with the city of Auburn or whether they're contracting with DSHS, that revenue base would not, that would be exempt from the BNO tax. And then art and cultural activities. I think this kind of stems from, we've got a theater here in Auburn and we have a theater that operates for our art and cultural purposes, they generate some revenue. But most types of revenue that a nonprofit art and cultural program provides is exempt or deducted from the BNO tax revenue as it's currently written in the BNO code. And I, for your reference, I, it's a lot, there's a lot of language, there's a lot of words. And so rather than going through all of the words for each of these concerns that businesses had, I did reference the section of the code and the language. So you can get a, you can see for yourself that the proposed language that I have in those, in those, each of those areas. And there's a lot of, in using other neighboring cities, there is other language in there, clarifications about different types of activities as well as additional exemptions and deductions. There are more, they're the least common exemptions and deductions. And they weren't, they weren't items that we actually heard from the business community about. So I really limited the exemptions and deductions for discussion tonight to the the issues that we kept hearing about repeatedly through our conversations with the business community. So that leads me to our discussion points. And in my, the feedback that I would really like to get from from you and why need to get from you. And I've got them up on on the screen here. You can ask me questions, give me feedback. But I think that we have some main questions that we need to answer. Do we want to move forward with proposed rates, the proposed rates that I had? Or do we want to maybe do a more uniform rate? And do we want to consider a cap for certain types of businesses or any businesses at all? Do we want to adjust the proposed square foot rate or the application or vary from it any more than what I already have written in the draft code? Do we want to make amendments to the new business tax credit? Are there any other credits that we should be considering? I, I tried to pull out from the business community pretty strongly, you know, what their ideas and suggestions could be. And I wasn't hearing, I didn't receive a lot of feedback in that regard as far as tax credit. So I was going with what I knew. And if, but if you have any, any credits that you think I should be considering, please let me know. And then any other deductions and exemptions that we should be considering and or amending. So I'm going to hand it over to you for a little bit and so we can have a discussion.
Hey, Jamie, thank you so much for the presentation. So I'll go ahead and kind of weigh in here a little bit and then the other council members can join in on this. And and again, you know, we had, what was it, eight or nine meetings with the businesses through the Auburn Area Chamber of Commerce? And, you know, many of us attended a few of those, I attended as many as I could. And, you know, we heard the concerns and the suggestions of businesses, as you mentioned with that. First, my opinion is I would say no on uniform rates. I would be preferred to look at the variables that you've done, not specifically saying those are the numbers, but not interested in in looking at and going with uniform rates. Also, I'm not interested in a tax cap for businesses who generate billions of dollars in revenue. You know, I mean, if a company is generating multi billions of dollars in revenues, my own personal opinion is that they don't need those kind of tax breaks. They need, and we always heard them paying their fair share. You know, maybe it's more than fair share, I don't know. But I would not be interested in offering any kind of a tax gap to businesses with billions in revenues. I'm extremely interested, as you mentioned, in protecting our small, most vulnerable businesses in our community and helping them the best we can to make sure they can thrive and survive, especially during these times. Question I did have is, you mentioned the warehousing and looking at the various numbers you presented square footage wise. Is there a way we can determine how many businesses with warehousing occupy a space that's maybe over 50,000 square feet? Be nice to see kind of a segmented breakdown of the business square footage that is occupied by businesses in our warehousing. And we have over a million square feet of warehousing, I guess. And, you know, there may be somewhat very large, like you said, the Safeway distribution center is huge or 500,000 square feet. But, you know, maybe a lot of them are in the smaller category. And, you know, just a handful in those extremely large categories. So I'd be curious to know that. One comment that was made from our our business community was it's not the right time for BNO tax. And of course, you mentioned our implementation will be in January 2022. And we've heard from a lot of businesses and I can tell you on a personal note from the children who have their own businesses that it could take many, many years for businesses to recover from the downturn in their revenues related to this pandemic. You know, it's, it's hard to think about recovery even occur even now when like restaurants are only open to 25% capacity. My son rolls two restaurants in the Portland area. I said that even at a 40% capacity, it's hard to break even. You know, there's just really no way you make a whole lot of money unless you're doing a tremendous amount of delivery and takeout business in addition to your in-house dining where the 25% capacity really gives you enough to to do things on. And we've seen that in Washington State where some businesses who have been interviewed in news programs have actually said that the 25% capacity, they're even paying for them to open the doors. They're still doing their takeout delivery, but they would actually be losing more money than they'd be gaining by opening the doors at 25%. So I, you know, it's not very dissimilar, I would say, to us in the city of Auburn post Great Recession of taking many, many years to recover from that, just to get to an employee based level at FTE level. That's almost even to what it was back before the the Great Recession. You know, and a lot of that's been for a lot of different reasons. But I'm concerned about the amount of recovery time that businesses would need to to be able to have an impact, if you will, on their businesses to help with the with the BNO tax. And then lastly, for me, I would be interested in looking at a higher threshold. I know that brings the revenues down a bit, but I think 500,000 is too low. You know, if you're looking at a business generating $60,000 a month, you know, $720,000 a year, that's a good business. But, you know, it's still at $500,000. It's not a huge amount of revenue for a business. And I'd be interested in looking at 750,000 or even above that to see what that does for us in our revenues. But along with that, I would be also more interested. And of course, you have the the square footage taxing there with wholesaling and warehousing. I would be interested in potentially looking at reducing the retail rate by maybe cutting that in half, but then increasing the wholesale rate and the warehousing rate to compensate for that. And basically have the larger revenue generation come from that industry versus the larger revenue generation that comes to the retail industry, especially since I know we're going to have quite a number of our retail businesses that will be exempt from this tax. Like you said, we're not, you know, there's only, I forgot the number you mentioned about all the business we have, but it's not a huge number. But I am very interested in continuing to protect even further those retail establishments and making this potential burden on them even much less than what it is. And although it's not a whole lot, we start looking at the amount of revenue generated from those businesses, it could still be a somewhat of a burden on them. And I'm just curious to see if we did some other models of what that would look like. So those are my thoughts.
And just, I can give you, I can respond to a couple of those. With the, with the total square, the warehouse square footage that you are asking, our, our biggest issue right now, somebody's, somebody's calling up my, my team's phone. I can't hang up on them, so I apologize. But we do have some data that I was able to use as my, as my, for my baseline assumptions. I don't, I can't say for certain. There it's gone, that for certain that that real, that information is is very reliable. I saw, I don't think it's complete data. So I can work a little bit more with economic development. I think we rely pretty heavily on self-reporting on some of those, on some of those on square footage areas. So how accurate is, I can, I can pass along what I have. Again, I don't think it's complete. So I had to do some extrapolation when I was doing my assumptions.
And that, that would be fine. I think, you know, to give us a, a, a different idea of what I'm looking at, you know, to give us a, a number source, if you will, that would be even helpful even looking at that, even though it not be totally 100% accurate, but kind of get us close enough to where we can realize that this may be, you know, as close as we can get, if you will, that would be helpful.
Okay. And then also just a note, talking about reducing those retail rates, remembering that because retail makes up such a large amount of the revenue generated in Auburn, the total tax we collect is very sensitive to any small change in that rate. So we could, if we bumped up that retail rate, just a little tiny bit, we saw in that in the uniform rate model where we bumped it up to 0.085% across the board, our total tax collected increased over a million dollars. And that's really because that was a small increase in the retail rate. We decreased every other category, but that small increase in retail created a much larger tax collected on our behalf. So likewise, any small reduction, I lowered that rate as low as I could to get us at the minimum amount of tax that we could collect and hit our between square footage tax and retail to get us at that $6 million, that estimate.
I understand, okay. Again, that I would, I would still like to, you know, I would still like to look at a higher threshold and have you run some statistics and data on that. The balancing, if you will, of the other categories to kind of make it up. But I'm still interested in a higher threshold for retail.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, we have Councilmember Brown with a question first.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor De Corsi. And I want to compliment Director Thomas for such a great presentation. A lot of numbers in there, a lot of work's been done. So I, I want to agree with Deputy Mayor De Corsi about the uniform rates. I, you know, more in alignment with the idea of a progressive tax as opposed to regressive, as well as I'm in agreement with the maximum cap. I think, I think that that's probably not appropriate. The one thing that I did want to ask, what level of accountability is there for, for example, maintaining the FTEs? Do we have any way to, you know, ensure that for the, for the tax break, folks are maintaining what they've committed to? How does that work?
So because it is, they would be filing on a quarterly basis. In most cases, some businesses will be filing on an annual basis if they're small enough. But most cases, particularly the the businesses, as it's written, would be filing on a quarterly basis if they're applying for the FTE credit. They would be taking their credit quarterly. So I would say, I mean, they wouldn't, at the very least, they could, if we have a threshold of 20,000 or 20 FTEs, then they would need to have 20 FTEs that quarter. And we could write it into the code, it would be written into our, our reporting, our reporting system when they're taking, when they're, because it would be an online system where they file and they pay their taxes. It would automatically require them to enter how many FTEs that they are reporting for that period. And then it would calculate their tax credit that they would be eligible for. So it's not necessarily a one time promise to get a credit. It's really a commitment every quarter is how the credit would be calculated. So every quarter, they'd have to have that 20, the minimum of 20 FTEs.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sterns?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I really appreciate the presentation. This is an incredibly dense subject. I mean, just look at the size of tax codes. They're massive. So I mean, there's so much work that you all put into this, I really appreciate it. I, I wanted to just sort of point out a couple of things. I really do, you know, strongly support the deductions that you have for cultural and artistic organizations, for daycare and for the interest on loans to farmers and ranchers. And I was, I had a question about that, which is do ranchers, that includes horses, right? Because we have like a pretty important horse industry in our area. And then along those lines, I mean, would, would the would this tax apply to like Emerald Downs and also Boeing? And then, so that's, there's a couple of questions. And then I did also want to make one suggestion. You, you referenced the tax credits in, on page 40 or whatever that page was. And there's a new business tax credit. And, you know, like, like with tax codes, we're trying to, you know, create public policy that, you know, encourages certain kinds of behavior. And so we do want new business to come here to Auburn. So I think that that is important. One thing that that I was thinking about would be, you know, would we also want to look at, you know, having a tax credit for those employers or those businesses that, you know, really hire people, hire workers and in particular hire workers who, you know, come from groups that have consistently faced barriers to employment. You know, there's a federal, a federal program that that does it and it actually sets out. And I think Washington State has a similar. There are a number of different categories of people who would fit that category, veterans, for instance. So, you know, maybe we could consider, you know, a working employee tax credit along in that particular section. But those are just some of my, my initial thoughts and I'm sure I have a lot more, maybe not all that I. But those are just some of my, my initial thoughts, and I'm sure I'll have a lot more, maybe not all that I. But I really just wanted to thank you too for all the hard work that you put into this.
Thank you. To answer your question about Emerald Downs, for the most part, they would not be subject because most of their revenue is derived from gambling and horse racing. Both are which are exempt activities under BNO. Boeing, depending on the type of revenue that they actually generate, that actually has Nexus in. In Auburn would be taxable. I think probably what I've seen in the past, the most tax being generated isn't related to Boeing, isn't from Boeing itself. But from suppliers that are shipping supplies and products and manufacturing parts to Auburn. Because there, the tax is taxable at the point of destination, which would be here in Auburn.
Thank you.
Councilmember Malanga?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to say that, looking at the discussion points. I was good with moving forward with the proposed rates. Thinking about a cap, I say no to that. And then looking at the square foot tax rate. I think you said it was on wholesaling, but what other business types could we potentially add that square foot tax rate to?
Well, essentially, if we were to do something like Kent or Bellevue, it would be any office space, so it could, and or retail space. So it would mostly its office space, so it would be. Any healthcare provider or medical provider or professional service provider that has an office space in. In Auburn, we could write it any, however we want, we could exclude retail but include professionals or exclude professionals in retail, but. Office space, make it very specifically centered around office space. We could really, really make it any way we want. How Bellevue and Kent have written it, they've written it very liberally where it includes just about everything.
And then I did like the new business credits that you had. And I'm, I'm supporting with Councilmember Brown has said to make sure that we have them. Report on the number of employees they have every quarter when they do apply for that tax credit.
And I could even, I could even tighten up the language a little bit too, just to very clearly clarify that that is an ongoing minimum requirement that they have to have every quarter. So it doesn't hurt to add that clarification in the, in the code.
Yep, thank you.
Councilmember Trump, Manuel?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I also would like to thank you for a great report, a lot of information that you, a lot of work you had to go through to put in this all together for us. And I just would like to thank you. I have to agree with a lot that Mr. De Corsi, Deputy Mayor De Corsi had to say. My husband and I eat out a lot, and we talked to a lot of the businesses out there, and they're kind of concerned about this. Being no tax and also a lot of them said they're not opening up their doors for full, you know, for the. Short, small amount of people coming in because they said that they're not going to make it either way, they're better off doing. People picking up their meals, so. But to the discussion point. I said no, even before Mr. De Corsi mentioned anything about. The uniform rates, I said no to that right off the bat. And also on the capping, also, I, I don't agree in putting any cap on, on this. Also, on the square footage, it would be nice to also get more on that for us to look at. And so I also was at pretty much a lot of the meetings that you had with the Chamber of Commons, and I heard all of their concernings. And some of these people saying that this is the wrong timing, and I remember when we first got, I first got elected. And I had to go to. A training on finance and I went and I saw that the city of Auburn was the only city that had enough money. Saved up for three years in case of anything happened. There was other cities that only had one a month, three years, you know, in their, in their account. So it made me say, you know, we got to do something, but. Right now, the timing, I, you know, it's going to be hard for us to be able to get that resources right off the bat. Those businesses getting their money back, especially with the COVID, and we don't really know when it's going to end either. Also with the tax credit, I, I like the, the new business credit. I thought that sounded pretty good, giving them an amendment. So what does that really look like if we did something like that, giving new businesses a tax credit?
So as, as it's currently written, how it's proposed, is that your question?
Yes.
So. Kind of thinking back to my calculation that I'd showed a couple of slides ago. It would look very similar in the calculation each quarter. To the example I had, instead of having the write-off for the BIA assessment fee. You would just be reducing if your tax liability for the quarter was thirty thousand dollars, let's say. And you had a total tax credit coming your way of twenty thousand dollars, you would pay ten thousand. Does, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it, it does, it does. Would we be looking into some other incentives or anything like that?
As it relates to BNO?
Yes.
We, we could, I, I'm not sure, that's why I'm open to ideas, I'm. I'm not the creative type. I, I, I'm not sure how, how other, other ways we can incentivize new business. I am taking Councilmember Stern's comments into consideration, though, talking about how maybe we can incentivize a credit for businesses. That hire historically disadvantaged employees and how we could build in a credit for them. I've got to kind of, kind of think on that a little bit, how you'd actually, A, enforce, how you would quantify that and then enforce it. But if there's other ways that we could attract businesses with our BNO tax code. I'm, I'm open to those suggestions, ideas, I think the most. Most easily applicable seem to be the, the per, the FTE credit of giving them a credit, because the more, the, the, kind of the. Not only does it attract businesses, but it also helps having those FTEs working in Auburn and coming into Auburn. And that helps just the rest of our economy as well. So not, not only the business it draws in, but those FTEs that they, they're bringing in are beneficial.
Okay, thank you very much.
Jamie, again, like everybody said, thank you very much for the presentation, all your hard work and all those who are working with you on this as well. It would be helpful if you could send us your presentation tonight. And Cal, so what I'm going to ask is that each of us kind of review this in detail. If you have any suggestions, as Jamie's mentioned.
Mayor back, raise your hand.
Whoops. Sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
Want to clarify that the city does not have three years of reserves. Years of reserves.
No, what I meant is when I went to that training Auburn had at that time, three years of reserve, that's what they showed us on a. One of the forms that they gave us with all the cities that had how much money they had in reserve.
Manuel, I'm going to challenge you on that. I don't know if it has three years of reserves.
Okay. Yeah, I think have reserves, it certainly, maybe what they meant is it was enough to, to bridge. X amount each year, if there was a fiscal, if there was a deficit. But I don't think, because if our budget is, let's say eighty million dollars a year, that would mean that we would need. Two hundred and forty million dollars in reserves and. I don't, I know that we've never had that kind of reserve. I suppose it depends on the context of the conversation. Yeah, but.
I think reserve. What Shelley used to tell us is that reserves should be. Three or four months, at least if there was absolutely no revenue coming in. That we could maintain as an ongoing or as a going business concern for three to four months. If you remember, our reserves. Best practice or what, Jamie, between twelve and sixteen percent?
Yeah, if we're talking, there's a couple of different kinds, you've got your cash flow reserve just to maintain cash flow, which is really the twelve percent target that you want. And then we also have a policy that has a target of about ten, eight to ten percent additional kind of rainy day funds. That are available for a one-time use.
Okay, great, thank you. It would be nice to have two hundred and forty million dollars in reserves, that would solve a lot of problems. I see you have your next steps up here. So again, counsel, I'm going to ask that each of us go through this report and the data. That has been provided by Jamie and the model ordinance. The ordinance in detail. Bring forward your questions, your suggestions, your comments, send those to Jamie, and as always, do not send them to each other. So let's just go ahead and forward those to Jamie so she can do a response back to us and handle it that way. And I would ask, we do this fairly quickly because the proposed next step show the revised code. And related ordinance for discussion coming back to us on March eighth of the study session. With potential action to adopt the ordinance on March fifteenth. So we basically have a short time, Jamie, go ahead.
And it is a very aggressive timeline. This was working under the assumption that we would have originally been presenting, actually two weeks ago, to the, at the study session. That needed to be canceled. So if we need another study session to come back and discuss, we certainly can do that. Of course, the sooner we get it adopted, the code adopted, the sooner we can start actually getting to the implementation phase and getting.
Okay, great. I appreciate that, so, yeah.
I don't want anybody to feel rushed into making a decision that they're not comfortable with, of course. But if we can address any of those outstanding issues, all of our questions answered at March eighth, then it would be nice to move forward with a potential adoption March fifteenth. But there's, there's no, there's no, nothing that requires that it's done in that, in that period of time.
Understand, very good. Well, thank you very much, and we'll work on it. And again, we'll send you our questions, comments, concerns, or anything else we identify with this, so. Okay, Jamie, once again, thank you, and that comes to the end of our items for general discussion. So we will now move into our public works and community development discussion items. And I'm going to take a break, I'll stop talking for a while and turn it over to Councilmember Sterns. You're muted, Chris.
Councilmember Stern, you're muted.
I apologize. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And so the first thing, we've got two things on the agenda. And the first is the capital project status report and feature project, and for that we have Director Dell.
Thank you, and I'm actually going to turn this over to Ryan Von Drack and to Jeff Bender, who are going to give you an overview of where we're at our capital project so far this year. And we'll go through our feature capital project. Go ahead, Ryan.
Good evening, council, I'm sharing my screen right now, for the record. I am Ryan Von Drack, Capital and Construction Engineering Manager, and we also have Jeff Bender, as Ingrid said, project engineer. Jeff has been project engineer with us for almost two years now, but this is the first time he has been in front of the Auburn Council, so. This is a bit of an introduction of him to you, but he's been doing some great work for the city. We are here to report on the status of the capital projects as well as present the feature project for the spring quarter. So let's get started. There we go. So we currently have thirty-five active projects totaling. Approximately sixty point six million in total project value. Of those projects, thirty-five, of those thirty-five projects, twenty-one are in design. And fourteen are in some various form of the construction phase. This graphic you've seen before, but it's an illustration that shows the total number of projects that were, have been bid the last four years or so. Against the total project costs for those projects. This year, we have one project that went out to bid so far. Small correction to note, the number shown in your council packets for this slide should read four point three million for the twenty twenty-one year in total project cost. And since we are. In that time period when you're. Going to start seeing us advertising more projects for construction here soon. What are some of the ones that you're going to see coming up? Advertise for construction bids, the Second Street Southeast Preservation Project is getting close to completing design. This project is on page one eighty-four of your packets. And this project will. Reconstruct Second Street Southeast from A Street Southeast to Auburn Way South. And include some street lighting improvements, some sanitary sewer improvements. A little bit of storm drainage improvements and upgrading curb ramps. To meet ADA, construction of this project is expected to begin in the spring of this year. We expect the, go to construction, advertise for construction bids likely in March. The next project I have. The Lakeland Hills Way Preservation Project, this is on page one eighty-five of your packets. This project will patch grind and overlay pavement on Lakeland Hills Way between Fifty-seventh Drive Southeast and Lake Taps Drive Southeast. This project will also upgrade curb ramps to meet ADA and will replace vehicle detection loops at the intersection of Lake Taps Parkway. And Lakeland Hills Way. This project is also expected to go to construction in the spring, and we expect this one to wrap up design very shortly. And go out for advertisement for construction bids. The last project I just wanted to bring up, this project is the Auburn Way North and First Street Northeast Signal Replacement Project. This project was actually. The fall quarter of last year project that was in the, in Auburn Magazine. And this project is on page one eighty-two of your packets, but this project will place the traffic signal. At this intersection, it's one of the oldest in town. It will, by virtue of replacing this signal, we are going to improve pedestrian and vehicle, vehicular safety through the intersection. As well as improve vehicle capacity through the intersection, including updating the intersection for the curb ramps. To meet downtown standards. Including the traffic signal, the traffic signal will be the decorative signal pole type. Construction of this project is expected to go to construction in the spring of this year. I put an asterisk on the, on the screen because. That really is dependent on how construction goes because signal equipment is a long lead item that takes quite a, quite a long time to. Manufacture after we've ordered it, or after the contractors ordered it, and especially with it being of the decorative type, we're unsure when they're actually. Put those in the ground, but construction is expected to start this spring. And then the one project that we showed on an earlier slide that is going out for construction coming up. Just so happens to be the feature capital project for this quarter, and I'm going to let Jeff take over from here.
Thank you, Ryan. Good evening, council members. As Ryan mentioned, my name is Jeffrey Bender. I've been with Auburn for almost two years now, and I'm one of the project engineers in the capital improvement project group. This evening, I'm going to present to you the Academy Pump Station One Replacement Project as the feature capital project for the spring quarter. Next slide, please. Map here in front of you, north is up. I wanted to give you an idea of the project site location in case you weren't aware. site location. In case you weren't aware, uh, it's located between R Street and Riverwalk Drive, uh, just south of Auburn Way South, adjacent to the Muckleshoot Smoke Shop. The property is actually accessed through the Muckleshoot Smoke Shop um driveway parking lot. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide is not in your council packets. I added it um hoping to be able to add a little bit of clarity, uh, give you an idea of what the site looks like and where these buildings are located on the site. Uh, so you can see I have labeled their existing pump station one and two, as well as the existing reservoir. Currently, these two pump stations supply water to the academy service area. Uh, both of the pump stations are supplied by Reservoir One, which is actually part of the Valley Service Area. Uh, the existing pump stations uh pump water through a fourteen inch ductile transmission main approximately two miles to reservoirs eight A and eight B. Uh, these reservoirs provide storage for the academy service area. And I also want to note that two of our largest customers uh are fed from that fourteen inch diameter transmission main. That would be the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, specifically the casino and the Auburn Adventist Academy. Next slide, please. Thank you. Um, I want to talk about the existing conditions here on this uh photo here on the bottom left, the center of the photo, the building that you see uh with the light above it. That's Pump Station One Building. It was constructed in nineteen sixty. It's definitely served the Auburn Water System well, but has reached the end of its useful life. It needs to be replaced. Uh, and it houses two of the four pumps at this facility currently. The building just left of it uh that has a generator in front of it is Pump Station Two. That Pump Station Building was constructed in nineteen eighty uh and houses the other two pumps at this facility. The pumping capacity of Pump Station One is eight hundred gallons per minute and the pumping capacity of Pump Station Two is fifteen hundred gallons per minute. Also want to note the transformer sitting there along the fence line, uh, almost center of the photo. That transformer is a city-owned and operated transformer as well as the overhead power lines that feed that transformer that provide power to the facility. Um, and you'll, you'll understand the significance of that in a little bit with a project update. Uh, the photo on the right is a picture of inside of Pump Station One. I just want to give you guys an idea of what the inside of the existing building looks like as well as what these pumps and motors look like in the piping infrastructure in there. And also, little bit of background on the project design. When we got started, we initiated with an assessment of the facility to determine what was the best route uh moving forward, what was the best option. Uh, we already knew that Pump Station One was at the end of its life, but doing a structural evaluation of Pump Station Two revealed that it would take significant upgrades structurally for seismic uh to expand the building to include additional pumps that would meet the city's current demands and future demands. So instead, we looked at the option of installing a brand new pump station, which we're calling Academy Pump Station Three uh to meet the needs. Also, by installing a new pump station, we're able to keep these two existing pump stations online, providing water to the service area uh with little to no interruptions during construction until the new pump station is ready to be brought online. So it makes construction sequencing yeah much easier to uh coordinate. Next slide, please. So I want to talk about the project scope and benefits. Um, as I mentioned, because Pump Station One has reached the end of its useful life, that building will be completely decommissioned and demolished. And it'll, area that it footprint right now will be restored to match existing surrounding ground area. Pump Station Two, because it would be very costly to upgrade that pump station and install additional pumps, uh, we've decided that we're going to repurpose that pump station. Uh, when this project is completed, it'll become a storage facility or storage area for the water utility equipment that they need to store inside of a building that has temperature control. So inside the building will maintain the existing electrical, the overhead crane, as well as heating so that the equipment can be moved around easy. Um, and then we'll be installing or building Academy Pump Station Three. This pump station will include four vertical turbine pumps. They'll be variable speed-driven pumps. Uh, also, there will be a separate electrical room to house the electrical equipment. Currently in the existing two pump station buildings, the electrical panels are inside the same room as the mechanical pump equipments. Uh, so you have to be careful when you're washing down and cleaning up that you don't do direct spray on that equipment and protect it. Also, there will be a small area of storage space in a separate room for spare parts associated with that pump station structure and equipment inside that building. The capacity of this new pump station has been designed at two thousand one hundred gallons per minute, which not only meets our current demand for water needs in the service area, but will allow for future growth uh as, as the area develops and things expand. Also want to talk about some of the project benefits. I've listed three of them here. Uh, new equipment and structure, obviously with the new structure uh going in, we'll have new equipment. Much of this existing equipment in the existing pump stations are original to those pump stations. So building a new pump station will replace the aging structures and equipment and will extend the life of this facility by at least fifty years. And since the new pump station uh will be built to current codes and standards, um, and installing new, more efficient pumps and electrical equipment, it'll reduce the uh over, the overall, has an overall potential to reduce the operational maintenance costs uh at this facility. Uh, increased capacity, installing the new variable speed-driven pumps will add flexibility to the system operation. These new pumps have been designed uh and selected to meet and ex, and allow for future growth. Currently, the existing pump stations have constant speed pumps, so operations staff doesn't have the ability to adjust how fast they pump the water. Uh, and we ran into an issue last summer when we were working on one of our projects there, installing a seismic up seismic valve on the reservoir. Uh, it took a lot of coordination because the reservoir had to be isolated and we had to feed water from a different facility. A lot of coordination had to happen there to make sure that the water to the academy service area uh was maintained adequately. So having these new variable speed pumps will aid in that um, that activity. Uh, also, the uh redundancy, want to talk about that a little bit. The new piping infrastructure that has been designed to provide improved redundancy, uh, these new, the new design configuration will provide the added flexibility and system operations, allowing the operations staff to select uh what source we need to um supply water from in the event that we had to do maintenance on Reservoir One or the Howard Road Facility uh just down the hill uh to the west. So with having this new piping sequence in place, it, it gives the operators just some flexibility so that they can maintain service to the area uh and do the proper maintenance necessary. Next slide, please. Uh, the project budget uh is estimated that this project will cost four point three five million dollars and is being funded through the water funds via bonds and utility rates. The design was completed in December of twenty twenty. Uh, we did our final review late December, early January, and advertised a project for construction bids in January. Um, bids were opened last week, Thursday uh with favorable bids, and we are looking to award the project hopefully by the end of this month and anticipate construction starting um mid to late April and be completed by May of twenty twenty-two. With that, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to present this project to you. Uh, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Um, thank you, uh, Jeffrey, and thanks, Ryan. Do we, do we have any questions? You know, try to look at the thing. There we go. And going, any questions? So if we don't, I had one about the, the um, the pump, Jeff, and then that's um, it, it's on the reservation. So do we have to follow like federal um environmental laws? And then also, do we work with the tribe at all on, on any of this?
For the pump stations?
Yeah.
Um, those are actually on city-owned property?
Right, but so within the reservation boundary. The reservation boundary goes down to R Street.
Yeah, so, so in reservation boundary area, because that is city-owned property, it's not considered part of the reservation, and so it's not subject to reservation rules unless it's actually owned by the tribe.
Okay.
Good.
And this is the tribe doing anything with us on this or are we, or no?
Not for our water system. Um, that's typically something that is managed by the city alone.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Brown is ready to begin.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. Uh, just curious, um, love to get a tour of that facility. I used to work in the interim onboard a Navy ship and loved those uh big pumps and uh valves and all that stuff. So just would love to have a tour sometime.
Yeah, and so, so the whole council knows before COVID started last year, one of our plans was to actually do a field trip with council members to be able to see some of our facilities. We do have a plan to do that again, once we are uh past the pandemic and we can actually do some of those site visits with staff.
That sounds exciting. We can see the inside of the reservoir.
I don't know if you want to see the inside of the reservoirs.
Well, I thought, also, I thought when you said we had to, you know, drive through the smoke shop, I'm like, okay, I thought you were going to say we did drive through joint rivers, but um, it's good to hear. All right, thank you, guys. Um, any other questions? Okay, if not, thank you again. Uh, Jeffrey and Ryan, really, really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you. My pleasure.
So um, next, um, we have Director Tate, who will talk to us about the bridges and um the consideration of annexation. So um, thank you, Director Tate.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so uh, last item, long evening, last item. So I'll uh, I think I'll make this fairly quick. But um, we wanted to, this was sort of a late-minute addition uh to this evening's agenda. We just wanted to keep council apprised of um, you know, the, the status of discussions and activity uh related to the bridges annexation. Uh, we came, I came to city council almost a year ago today um to provide an orientation of what the bridges was. So um, I, I, what I did in the packet was I just provided last year's memorandum, and that's on page, uh, I think it starts on page two oh one of your packets, the last four or five pages of your packet. And uh, so I didn't want that to be confusing or to look like a misprint. That is last year's date.
Jeff, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Councilmember Baggett? Councilmember Baggett? I'm sorry, Councilmember Baggett. Unfortunately, I'm going to need you to get off home. Thank you.
Good to go?
Thank you, Jeff. Yes.
Okay. Um, so that's not a misprint. That was last year's memo. Um, and I thought it would be a good starting point. Uh, and the reason that we wanted to uh brief council this evening is because there has been uh some correspondence from the city of Kent and there may be constituents or folks uh uh that you hear from or that you talk to. And we just wanted to make sure that city council was up to date on everything that's going on. So just as a real quick um uh reminder, uh, the bridges is that island that's uh surrounded by the city of Auburn. It's an island of Kent that's surrounded by the city of Auburn. And um, I'm going to attempt to share my screen, Sean, if that's okay. Um, and uh, provide, uh, I'm just going to go right to where this is in your packet. Uh, so um, nothing different than what you already have. But uh, what you see is that vicinity map that shows the general location of where the bridges is at, uh, up on Lee Hill. Um, it was uh an area that was annexed into the city of Kent back in nineteen eighty-seven, uh, long before Lee Hill was annexed into Auburn. So when Auburn's annexation of Lee Hill occurred in two thousand eight, uh, that annexation is what created this island. Prior to that, it had been a disconnected uh area of municipal Kent, disconnected from the city of Kent. Um, I'm going to scroll down a little bit uh because it zooms in on what the bridges looks like uh when you are a little bit uh closer. Uh, you know, if you uh fly in closer to that area. And what you see there is on the, kind of the west and the north side of that uh shaded blue area are the three hundred and eighty-six uh residential uh uh parcels of land that are there and which is almost nearly built out now. Uh, you can see that uh in the aerial photograph, you can see sort of a central area that is uh undeveloped, and uh that's because there's fifty-six acres or so of open space. And then way down at the uh, the lower left corner, um, southeast corner, if you're familiar with that area up there, it's right at the roundabout. Uh, there's thirteen acres of undeveloped land. Uh, this area, as a reminder, is um served by Auburn Sewer, uh, but it's served by Kent Water and Storm Utility. Uh, so on page two oh four of your packet, there are a number of kind of bullet points that sort of lay out the kinds of things that the city of Kent and the city of Auburn have been talking about. Uh, and while it's really simple to look at the bridges and look at it as a map and say, well, why is this weird thing out there, this island? And why not just change the map and make it part of Auburn? And that's the, the conversations that we've been having with the city of Kent uh for uh, geez, almost about two years now. And a lot of that conversation is about um, you know, what would happen uh to the land and how it would be treated uh from a zoning and land use perspective. Uh, because it currently is governed by Kent City Code and it uh creates a bit of an anomaly if you bring it into Auburn because we have different codes. Uh, so there's that to sort out. And like I said, there's thirteen acres of undeveloped land. So how that would be developed in the future is, you know, a conversation that occurs. Uh, the condition of infrastructure, the type of infrastructure, so stormwater pipes and stormwater ponds and streets and sidewalks, and there's a bridge in there, thus the name of the bridges. Uh, so there's lots of uh assets that um have to be looked at and we need to, that, you know, Kent has different kinds of infrastructure systems than Auburn. And uh, so the compatibility of those infrastructure systems, you know, we need to really kind of understand that and the cost. And that open space, that's owned by the city of Kent and would that turn into city of Auburn ownership? And uh, so you know, those were the bullet points. Uh, there are a few more as well, but those are the bullet points that I put together uh about a year ago at this time, just to brief council on um the kinds of things that we were talking through, the details we were talking through. Uh, last week, a um, a letter uh was sent out by the city of Kent to uh the residents of uh, you know, those three hundred and eighty-six homes. And um, that's, that, you know, that's partly why we wanted to talk about it this evening because that letter uh informs the, the residents up there that uh the annexation conversation's not moving forward. And um, I say that, I'm going to unshare my screen here. Uh, and I say that because um, part of um, uh, we, what I want to focus in on, now I'm going to reshare, is um, is, you know, what that letter, uh, what that letter says. Uh, so I'm going to bring that up on the screen. So can I get a thumbs up from Deputy Mayor if you can see that letter? Thank you. Um, so in that uh letter, um, there's a description to the residents up there of some of these issues we've been talking about, but it's that first sentence that um, if uh, I think if, if we had an opportunity, Kent sent this out and we didn't have an opportunity to provide input, but we probably reword that first sentence a little bit. and we didn't have an opportunity to provide input, but we probably reword that first sentence a little bit. Uh, because really what it comes down to is that there, there are costs associated with it. There are, uh, vesting issues that we've got to work through in terms of, uh, the land use laws and things that apply in that and in the city, uh, if it, if it moves from one city to another. So there, there's, there's a, there's time expense and there's capital expense. And, and some things you can't just sort out. Yeah. I mean, some things you may have to look at and say, uh, you know, you're taking in something that's an anomaly, uh, that, you know, you wouldn't, uh, uh, typically have if, you know, maybe one city is reviewing a development proposal versus another. Um, so, uh, I just wanted to, to say that, um, uh, that first sentence, uh, you know, we really didn't make a decision. I think what we came to the conclusion was is this is going to take time and money uh, to really work through. And, um, uh, that's probably not a decision as much it is a realization. Uh, that it's hard work. It's hard. There, there's, you know, I, I don't need to tell city council, but when you get into the details of something that could seemingly be easy, it turns out that the details make it harder. Uh, so that is the case in a lot of things in life. Uh, but that's sort of where we came to, um, you know, a list of things that we would need to analyze and we would need to understand and we would need to, uh, you know, talk about cost and things of that nature. So, um, that's, uh, uh, you know, that is, uh, really the reason, you know, we wanted to make sure that it's Auburn City Council was aware that this communication occurred. And, uh, really, uh, you know, kind of what our position is in terms of, uh, looking forward. I don't think that, uh, these decisions are ever final. These are always ongoing conversations. Um, and, uh, I think that the city of Auburn is always attempting to be creative and trying to work through and problem solve. So, um, with that said, um, I, uh, would welcome any, uh, questions. I don't know if there's anything that, um, any, any of my other colleagues would like to add either. Uh, Ingrid's been part of the conversations, uh, mayor's been part of conversations. So, um, uh, it's, it's been a robust dialogue for a couple of years at this point. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Director Tate. Do we have any questions? Hmm. Apparently everyone's content to let the.
Councilmember Baggett raised his hand.
Oh, good. Councilmember Baggett.
Yeah, uh, I've been, uh, listening in on some of the, from some of the homeowners up there, uh, at the bridges to find out, uh, what some of the problems they've been going through. And along with the talks, uh, between the two cities. Uh, do we, do we feel that this is, uh, uh, just posturing on the part of Kent? Or are we really looking at possibly getting, uh, back to the table and, and, and negotiating? Maybe compromising with some of the cost involved?
Uh, I mean, I'll just say from my own perspective, um, uh, very rarely do we come to the table, lay it all out, have a, a dialogue, share a lot of information and then tell any other party that we're done talking. Uh, talking's important, but oftentimes is the case is as in the beginning and the beginning, uh, maybe sounds strange because it's, you know, taken a couple of years to, to get to this point. But sometimes in the beginning, you have to peel all the layers back before you truly understand what you're taking on, uh, as a process, not, not just taking on in terms of, uh, residence or infrastructure as a process. What are you taking on? Like what do we have? What are all the checkboxes we need to get through in a conversation like that? So, uh, I don't think conversations are ever dead. Uh, I think that, uh, uh, sometimes, uh, new folks come to the table, uh, new interested parties come to the table, have new ideas. And, you know, this, right now, we, we know what we know, but there's things we don't know. And that, that's not a very articulate way of, of capturing anything. But I mean, uh, we can only, um, you know, right now we're looking at a big list of things to do. And, um, uh, some of those things are, are hard. Some of those things cost money. And yeah, the more people that are at the table to talk about it and they come up with creative ways to overcome those, the better positioned we are.
So it's not really dead in the water yet. From our perspective.
Yeah, I mean.
I know Nancy, you've been involved in that also.
The answer is no, it is not dead. In fact, we were trying to come up with some, as Jeff said, creative ways of keeping this discussion going this weekend. And when, when we had the meeting back in December and it was determined that there, at that point in time, there were some significant costs that neither city felt they should bear on their own. It was mutually agreed upon that at that point, we would not be moving forward. Since that point in time, we have been trying to come up with some creative ways of perhaps making this work.
Yeah. As president of the Vintage Hills Homeowners Association up there for more than 20 years, uh, I've been deeply involved in a lot of this. And, uh, I did get a call from several neighbors up there that actually were concerned about it when they received that letter. Uh, and that pointed out a lot of the other subsequent discussions that took place between the cities and our staff. So, uh, yeah, I, I just, uh, I'm a little surprised at, at, uh, the city of Kent and what they've done in this regard. So, uh, that's just my opinion, but, uh, thank you for the update.
Um, thank you, Councilmember Baggett. Um, and, and thank you, um, Director Tate and everyone on the mayor's staff and the mayor. Diplomacy is not always easy and, um, but you guys do a, a wonderful job. And, you know, I'm, I'm glad that, um, you know, there's still hope and we'll just see what happens. But certainly appreciate, you know, the effort. I mean, this is hard stuff and, um, I'm glad you guys are on it. So, um, with that, I will turn it back over to the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sterns. All right, council, do we have any other discussion items this evening? Okay. I am sorry to keep us for a couple of minutes longer, but I have two very quick items to bring up on a new business. Um, one is we have, we received some, um, correspondence related to a request for a potential resolution, uh, from the Auburn City Council. And I wanted to just get a consensus if we feel this is something we want to go forward with. Um, and this involves an international issue, keeping in mind that, um, city council in Auburn has, uh, typically does not get involved in international issues. But, um, you know, I wanted to bring this forward to council anyhow to see if you have any, um, desire to go forward with it. So there is a issue in India related to farmers, um, having been treated unfairly. And the farmers unions, unions in India, um, have, uh, have had complaints. And, uh, there are laws there that benefit corporates, but not the farmers and laborers. And due to continuing disregard of the farmers and the unions objections to farm bills over about six months, six month period of time, hundreds of thousands of these farmers compelled in India to protest outside the nation's capital, risking their susceptibility to COVID infection. Um, the city, Seattle City Council in King County, um, passed a, um, a resolution on this and the city of Kent has also passed a resolution in support for the farmers. So I'm bringing this forward to, uh, quickly discuss and to see if we have any desire to go forward. Councilmember Brown, go ahead.
Thank you very much, uh, Deputy Mayor De Corsi. Um, I've done some reading on this issue and, uh, uh, you know, I, I do have some opinions on this. Uh, I know we normally don't get involved in, in, uh, foreign affairs per se. I mean, we do have, uh, sister cities and we engage in those sorts of, uh, international activities. And we have a significant number of, uh, students, uh, you know, the, uh, foreign students that come, come to attend Green River College, uh, historically in our town. We do have a, a, a rather large Sikh population here in South King County. And, uh, you know, my experience with these folks are they're, they're great neighbors. They're, they're good members of our community. Um, and this situation in India, I'm afraid is developing into uh, something far more than an issue related to commodity prices or farming, uh, marketing rules. Uh, rather what we have here is a, um, suppression of free expression. Uh, India has been known as the largest, uh, democracy in the world and has done historically a fairly good job of, of living up to that. Uh, but unfortunately, uh, what we're seeing in, uh, India now with respect to these voices that are trying to be heard, where there's, uh, feelings of, you know, economic, uh, uh, favoritism for corporate farms versus family farms, uh, that's, that's all well and good to have those discussions. But when people are disappearing and being put in prisons and jailed without, uh, you know, proper due process, from what I've been reading, this is something that I think we want to say something about in this country where democracy is, um, not as sure as we might've thought that it was one day, uh, you know, before this year, beginning of this year. Uh, so I'm in favor of taking a look at this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jay Raj.
Um, can I say, uh, uh, Councilmember Larry Brown took my thunder away from me. Well, it's pretty much what he said, uh, and I've kind of been watching what's been going on in the background. But, uh, everything what, uh, Councilmember Brown has said, I agree with. And I will support the resolution as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
Um, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I, I totally support the resolution. Um, you know, just the other day I was watching, um, a program that, that on John Lewis and it was, would have been his birthday, but you know, it really, you know, reminded me, um, what he talked about, which is that when you see something that's not right, that's not fair or not just, you have to speak up. You have to say something. So, um, given, you know, the, the, the other, um, uh, members of the council pointed out that the, you know, suppression of free speech, but you know, also the violence, um, that's been committed against the protesters or their human rights issues. So I, I feel strongly that we should, um, as a council, say something.
Councilmember Baggett.
I concur with, uh, my fellow colleagues on this. I think that, uh, you know, uh, many times in the past Auburn has passed resolutions supporting different causes. Uh, and I think that this is one that shows the unity. It shows, uh, that we are, uh, fighting for democracy and, and, uh, around the world. And this is just one example of how things can turn the other direction. And we all know what happened in the first part of January in the Capitol. And, uh, you know, if we don't continue to support democracy and what it stands for, uh, around the world and within our own country, uh, we could be faced with a similar situation ourselves. Thank you.
Mira Backus.
Um, I don't think I had any.
Okay. I, I saw you unmuted and I thought you may have had your hand up. So, okay.
I have to tell you all to be very careful. You cannot vote at any session. And at this point you are getting dangerously close.
Yeah. So, uh, Councilmember Malinga, very quickly, and, uh, again, uh, nothing related to, um, uh, causing a vote on this.
Yes, thank you very much. All I would ask is, uh, can I get more information on the topic?
Okay.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. So, uh, council, I would say that yes, we have a consensus. So what I would ask for is that yes, uh, some council members have taken a look at this issue. If we could have, um, be provided with some more information on this issue and, uh, go forward from there and, um, and then perhaps look at a potential, um, resolution coming forward to council. Uh, we'd say we go from there and perhaps Director, uh, City Attorney Como, if you have any comments, suggestions for us.
I do not have any comments at this time. Thank you. I will drop the presentation and I will, uh, provide that to Mayor Backus for her review and yours Deputy Mayor.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Okay.
I, I do want to know Deputy Mayor De Corsi, you just wanted more research on this. Who are.
I, I, no, I, I think if, if, um, um, as Councilmember Brown said, he's done some reading on it and such. So if there's other, perhaps other than what we have received in the correspondence and email, if there's anything else that council needs to be provided with that would help in the process or perhaps it's just drafting a resolution and having us review a resolution. Either way, I'm fine. So I, I, I don't look for any presentation or any, uh, extended, um, reports.
Okay. If, if any council members have information that they would like to provide to Antoinette.
Yep.
That would be fine, but I just want to be clear that we as a city team are not going to be doing research on this topic.
Agreed. Yeah, agreed. So, Councilmember Trump, Andrew.
Did, uh, the city get a copy of a resolution that Seattle and, uh, the other cities have passed?
I, I'm not sure if we actually received the rest, their copies of the resolutions. But what, what I would suggest is again, let's have City Attorney Como, um, go through a process of, of drafting a resolution and then kind of go from there. Uh, Councilmember Jay Raj, I think, but I, I would like to end this now because I don't want to see it too, too deep into this. And I, I want us to go ahead and have our city attorney provide us with the documentation we need to have. And that will give us a starting point, if you will. And then, um, we can have further discussion on it as the legislation comes forward to us, if, if that's okay. Okay, thank you. And then also fairly quickly, council, if you may recall, uh, each of us received a, uh, an email from a resident who was looking to have council look at a, um, a, uh, a, a newer, different revenue sources for expanding our sidewalk construction in Auburn. A lot of this was related to Lee Hill, but, um, we, um, don't have particularly revenue sources other than what's already been provided to do extensive sidewalk, um, additions, especially in areas that were annexed that were formerly King County where there was much different codes relating to sidewalks. In many cases, none, uh, as compared to what we have in the city of Auburn. Uh, Director Galb asked for some comments back from council. Um, she did not receive comments and what I'm going to suggest is that go back and, um, read the email again. And, um, that we have, um, this would have an impact on our priority, uh, already part of our 2122 budget. It also could have an impact on other, um, initiatives that we go forward with related to other revenue sources we need. So for example, we still have not, um, have not come whole, if you will, with our arterial, um, funding and, and the need for that. Although that number's come down, uh, quite a bit from what it was originally. But there's a lot of gaps, if you will, we still need to fill in those areas. So this is another one we could potentially look at. And then, um, what I would, what we can do is have Director Galb prepare a presentation for an upcoming study session that will give us more briefing on this and, um, what the impacts are. But in the correspondence we see from Director Galb, there are specific questions that were asked related to potential revenue generations. And again, I would ask you to go back and look at that. Uh, any comments you can have, please send those individually to Director Galb and not to each other. And then, uh, Director Galb can report back to us and see if there's sufficient information there for her to go forward and also to do a presentation. Is that okay, Director Galb?
Yeah. I mean, at the, at the heart of the question from the resident is whether or not the council wants to consider new funding to do additional sidewalk improvement beyond what our current programs are.
And that, that's a hard question to ask because we have lots of funding needs. You guys talked about the BNO tax today. We've talked about in the past, the preservation funds and the fact that we need to fix our 103 local street preservation fund that's currently relying on the real estate excise tax. So it's, it's not a simple question. So the question that I really have for, for all of you is, is this something that you want us to consider trying to expand the sidewalk program? Because it would mean trying to identify new revenues.
Great. Councilmember Sterns?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I, I read the email, but I, I took it as if we wanted to go ahead with this, then answer the question. So we had to go through this one gate first. And so I just, that, that's why I didn't send anything back.
Oh, that's, that's quite all right. Again, just let's go back to it again. And questions that are generated, go and forward those on the Director Galb and then we can take from there. So, all right, everyone. Thank you so much for your patience, your participation in this very long study session this evening. And at the, a little bit beyond the four hour mark,